Good evening, welcome to school committee for March 30th, 2015. We'll start with the approval of minutes for the March 16th meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the March 16th, 2015, school committee minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments on the minutes? Here none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you. Communications, student communications, Brad, welcome.
Alright, so last Friday started the mark of Green Week, and last Friday was Fossil Free Friday, and students who carpooled with four more other students received a bagel and a parking spot and clothes. And today was Meatless Monday, and students can win a raffle for eating lunch without any meat. And tomorrow is Treatless Tuesday. Tomorrow during F and G period, Marina Angelio will present Fatal Vision for all grades. She'll be telling the story of her relative Matthew Angelio, a story of responsibility lost devastation consequences and poor decisions. This Thursday, also this Thursday, will be the last MCAS date, which will be the long comp, and tomorrow and Wednesday will be the other two days for sophomores doing the English MCAS. Students on Thursday also will be wearing blue to support National Autism Awareness Day, which will be the 2nd of April. Last night, the girls varsity soccer and boys hockey teams appeared at the Hingham Sports Partnership Comedy Fundraiser at the Loring Hall, and they both received standing ovations. And that's it, any questions or comments?
Anybody? No? Thanks very much, Brad.
Thank you.
Good luck on exams if you're taking them. Okay, other communications, Dot?
Yeah.
Alright, questions and comments from the audience, anything not on the agenda? No? Okay, go into the superintendent's report.
Yes, full day kindergarten update, the enrollment period is nearly over, although that doesn't mean that all of the packets are in. We hope it means that all of the packets have been picked up, but packets will dribble in as people are able to get the information, particularly the financial piece of it and things like the preschool information that they have to get from their provider. So as of today, there were a total of 237 packets that have been picked up, which is on the low side of what I would have expected, but the first official check that we do always tends to be quite a bit less than where we... Those 237 for the half-day program at this point, which was on the low side. And of the packets that have been picked up, roughly 80% of them were at the full tuition rate is where they would fall, and that's about what we estimated overall to make our budget, so that percentage, even though it doesn't represent all the packets, is a good thing. We, at this point, it looks like we would need 14 sections, but each of those 14, just because of how they break across the buildings, has plenty of room to grow and stay within the 14, so at this point, I would be saying likely 14 rather than 15, 15 sections. We also at this time try to get a handle on how many children will be entering grade one who did not spend kindergarten with us, or not in our current kindergarten. And so far, 16 packets have been picked up there. We estimated, I'm going to say 40 or 50 in our budget, I think it was closer to 50, so we're still far away from that. So that's the update, the enrollment is going well, and we're hopeful that we'll get a prompt return. The financial information is coming here, and we'll create a spreadsheet that indicates the pieces that need to be included with that, which include enrolling in fax, which is the third-party collector, and also the deposit check and some of the other things that need to complete the enrollment packet. So we'll keep you posted as we get more information, but that's certainly a good start. In your packet, there was a handout from MASSS and MASC. The MASSS one, looking for it, had some further information about the state budget, in particular where the likely lobbying from MASSS would be, and largely it is around things like likely lobbying for, excuse me, likely lobbying for restoration of at least some part of the kindergarten expansion grant process that was fully eliminated in the governor's budget, but many towns are receiving fair amounts of money already under that program and would need it to continue their programs as is, so you'll see lobbying around that. Regional transportation and non-resident transportation, those are not things that impact us particularly. Homeless transportation impacts us only slightly, because we obviously don't have that many families, but also lobbying around full funding for Circuit Breaker, because that is not fully funded under the governor's budget. And the charter school reimbursement one is also something that does not affect us very much, because we only have a handful of youngsters that attend the charter school. So it's kind of a signal of where MASSS is, and MASC is in close proximity to that in terms of the things that they will be lobbying for. So there's a lot, a long ways to go on that. There's one other thing that was presented as part of the governor's budget, it's not really clear if it's in the budget or just a recommendation that went with it, and that was the recommendation that special ed schools, private special ed schools to, where some of our youngsters go, under the governor's statement as part of the budget, would be held to a 0% increase for next year in tuition, a flat tuition. We've budgeted, and you'll see that later in our budget information, we've budgeted a 3% increase across the board for all of those special ed placements, so 3% of that fairly large number, if it in fact were zero, would be a fair savings in the budget. So that's something that we're going to need to watch, I'll talk more about that later. Make-up day at Plymouth River, make-up for a snow day was on Saturday, I spent a fair amount of time over there, things were buzzing along as normal, it was like any typical day would be. The students were there from 8:20 until 12:30, it was two-hour release day, there was no lunch, so it was all instructional time. We had very, very good attendance for the teachers, and we had what personally was disappointing attendance for the students, it was about 85%, and I had hoped that it would be more. That's a little more than 10% greater than what we would normally have for attendance, and so I'm not sure where they were, but the good thing about it is that number of students being absent is only three to four a class, so as I went around the building and either went into or looked into classrooms that didn't look as if, you know, a large number were absent, it looked fairly typical. But a typical day at Plymouth River, they tell me, would be 42, 43 students absent overall, and this was 72, so that's what the increase is. So we have a make-up day for everyone this Friday on Good Friday, similarly it will be a two-hour early release for everyone, will not include lunch, so that will be all instructional time, and we're in hopes that we'll have similarly good attendance for the staff and certainly for the students as well. In your packet, there's one of those letters that we don't particularly like to receive, but do receive every now and then, a letter from DESE letting us know that next year we will have our mid-cycle coordinated program review, site visit, and report, the report we will get in by the end of this year. It is a little less intensive than the report that we had three years ago, on the cycle report, in that it will only address those areas where we weren't in total compliance at the last report, but we were in total compliance in a lot of, in most everything really, it was only a handful of things. So that would suggest that it isn't going to be as vulnerable a report to prepare. On the other hand, in addition to the things where we weren't in total compliance, and we now are, because we had to do a few things, mostly notificational, communication things, but in addition to that, they also will review anything that is new, regulation or legislation since then, and since there's always a fair amount of that new stuff coming along, we will have to start from scratch in preparing that. So anyway, it'll be part of next year, but the report needs to be put in this year as electronic submission of all of the data that we need. I left it, replaced tonight, a letter, I think I sent it to you as well electronically to the school committee, but wanted to mention in public that a very nice award, social studies award that Jim Cretaldi, who's our retiring director of social studies, received, and so that's good news, and hope that that will be picked up by the press as well. Also in your packet, there's a letter and some backup information. We are out of compliance with respect to a lot of those codes that annual checks should be picking up, and I think both the building department and we need to get back on a regular cycle, if they're coming every year or not periodically, so I left the letter in there, but I also left in there, just so that you wouldn't be misled, that when it says that we're out of compliance because of storage of flammables, most of the flammables, not to panic anyone, are things that are on the wall, as you might see in an elementary classroom, that are too close to the door, things that are stored on a cabinet, such as this bookshelf here, that are not 18 inches from the ceiling, things that are in elementary classrooms, festive things that sometimes hang from the ceiling and so on. We had to do a lot of cleanup on all of those things, so a lot of getting back into code compliance is going to mean that we have to clean up our classrooms, and not everybody will be particularly happy about that, but everybody's got to start working on that. But I also wanted to mention that last week, there's been several very successful and festive events, one being the Pizza Palooza, was the SNAP fundraiser last Wednesday night. I was fortunate to be a judge and had to eat pieces of 10 different kinds of pizza, not my forte, but anyway, really great event, a lot of happy community spirit, very, very well-attended. They raised, they had about 700 people there, families, individuals, and raised over $7,000 in that two-hour period, so that was great. Thursday night, our middle school had their, and tripped what I think has become or will become the annual trivia night, and that was very well-attended and a lot of fun to be had by all. And the third thing is, we had the annual art show, that is our entire district art program, elementary, middle, and high school, and rather than being at the high school this year, on one night, the display has been at Town Hall, was there all week last week, and then on Friday night, it was enlarged with the things that weren't open to the public all week, and was a very successful event. Huge crowd of people, and parking seemed to go okay, I was a little worried about that, but they've done a survey, and we don't know the results yet as to whether or not this would be a good venue for it annually, rather than going back to the high school. I think the nice thing was, the fact it was here all week meant that folks that come in and out of Town Hall, particularly folks that come to night meetings, had an opportunity to see the artwork of the students, first of all, and secondly, when they opened up the auditorium on Friday night and had the ceramics displayed, really had much more of a museum kind of feel than when we were at high school on a Thursday night in the cafeteria, so we'll see where that goes. But a lot of good things going on, and I know some of you were at, at least some of those things.
Yeah, I was here for the art show on Friday night, terrific event, I ran into some people that I knew, and I asked one of them, I said, you know, this is a great opportunity for folks who maybe have never been in Town Hall before, and he said, yeah, that would be me, except for the gym. So you'd be surprised, but there are a lot of folks who don't come in here that often, and they utilized all the space, really everywhere, the auditorium, the hallways, the rooms over on the second and third floors, it was really, really terrific event, and the first floor as well. I would just add, there was another event Saturday evening, every two, every two years, the Hingham High School Athletic Hall of Fame inducts new members and honors, you know, prior inductees as well. There were 13, I believe, new members inducted this Saturday evening, I was fortunate enough to attend, and Dot Gala was honored for her many years of, you know, faithful service contributions and support of all of the athletic programs of the high school, so just wanted to recognize Dot for that nice award. It was really a great event. And I think, was H cam there? Someone was filming.
I don't know, that's a good question.
Somebody was filming, yeah.
I'm not sure if it was a camera or not.
But it was a really nice event, there was, you know, inductees there with their families, and it was very festive, and it was a really, really terrific event. Okay, any other, great, any questions, comments from anybody on that stuff? Terrific. Okay, we'll move into new business, so we're joined by our music department. Phaedra Sosano is our resource teacher, and she's here for our program review. You all received, I think, a written report, and I think Phaedra has some things to show us, so we'll look forward to that, thanks for coming.
Thank you, thank you for having us. Hi, everybody, my name is Phaedra Sosano, I teach all the 7th through 12th grade orchestras here in Hingham, and all of the other groups that go along with that. We have several members of the music department here in the room as well, I'd just like to have them let you know their names and where they teach, just so you know who they are in case you haven't seen them before.
I'm Brian Scottum, the band director at the middle school, in grade 7, 3, I'm band director of the high school, I teach J P music theory.
I'm Crystal, I teach, I'm a great dancer, I'm a whole young musical.
I'm Christopher Landis, I'm a day, I'm a middle school pro.
Dorothy Turner, I teach elementary music, I come to the primary and all of them.
I'm Steve Lewis, I teach primarily foster, but also in self.
Thank you. I wanted to start with just an overview of the sort of offerings that we provide in the music department for the students of Hingham, and we'll start by just briefly going over some of these things that are in that report already, but the offerings that we have at the elementary level. We offer general music up until grade four for students, there is a recorder program added to the third grade curriculum, and in fifth grade, all students are asked to choose either band or chorus or orchestra when they no longer receive general music anymore. That is at all four elementary schools, and there was a time when we had more general music options available, but we'll talk a little bit more about that later. At the middle school, in grade six, students are asked again to choose either band, chorus, or orchestra as their focus. At this time, we don't have any additional music electives that they can choose instead of that, so we have all of those three options. In 7th and 8th grade, band, chorus, and orchestra all become true electives, they're not required, so the students elect to be in them. We also offer select ensembles that are audition-based, that meet after school and in the evenings, that cater more to our more advanced students, give them additional performance opportunities, and in the case of jazz band, a totally entirely, you know, entirely different genre of music to study. At the high school, we offer band, chorus, and orchestra, two blocks each a day, they meet in full ensembles every day, except for the day in the cycle that are dropped. In the instrumental classes, we have one day during the cycle that we have a rotating sectional rehearsal available to us, which has been tremendously helpful to the students and the directors of those classes. We offer select ensembles based in all three of those disciplines as well, these are audition-based groups, again catering to the more advanced students where the repertoire is more sophisticated, the techniques are more advanced, and some of the music is really a college-level type of repertoire. We also offer, at the high school, really proud to offer Advanced Placement Music Theory, which has been tremendously successful, and there are probably 10 to 13 students in that every year, and our, Brian Scott is our teacher for that class. This year also, we had a new elective called the Evolution of Rock, which is an elective offered at the high school where no previous musical experience was necessary, is a classroom, a class taught by John Abrams, our new high school chorus director, and that was a semester course offered both semesters, so that was new this year. We do all sorts of things in the music department, and I know many of you have been to many of these events. In terms of concerts and performances of any size, we offer about 35 to 40, if you count up all of the different activities, district-wide, which is a tremendous undertaking in terms of event planning and curriculum planning and all of that, it's a lot of, a lot of everybody's evenings, and we are really thrilled to be able to be able to have the students show you what they've done, and we have many opportunities to have them perform in different types of ensembles, large ones, small ones, chamber music, things like that. We offer at the middle school, lots of, at the high school and the middle school and the elementary schools, some volunteer opportunities for students who may be looking for some community service, we offer, we can arrange for tutoring, we have chamber ensembles that play, students are allowed to help and encouraged to help with all of our concert setup and arranging, the older students helping the younger students in various times throughout the year. We offer a tremendous amount of very enriching field trips and tours, we actually just, Brian and I just got back last night from our tour, took 100 students from the high school band and orchestra in New York City for four days, and it was fantastic. We had a wonderful parent chaperones there as well, so it was a really, really successful tour, we took in things like the New York Philharmonic, brought the students to Lincoln Center, attended some student recitals at Juilliard, it was really a great opportunity, so that's one of our opportunities that we provide. In 7th and 8th grade, the students in 7th and 8th grade orchestra, 8th grade band, and junior choral spectrum take part, prepare for and take part in the Great East Music Festival in western Massachusetts. It's where we go and perform sort of as a full ensemble for rating and for a score and for some judge feedback on our, on our spring concert literature. After that, we spend some time in our local amusement park. We offer a lot of extra performance opportunities, that we often have groups at the National Honor Society induction, high school graduation, of course, program of study tonight this year for the first time. We participate in a number of regional and statewide music festivals, we participate in the junior and senior SEMSPHA festivals. SEMSPHA stands for Southeastern Senior Bandmasters Association, it's a regional group of about 35 schools. Students in grades 7 through 12 are eligible to audition for these festivals, and upon acceptance, they go and study at a very intense level for two days at another school with a guest conductor, they meet new students from other towns. We have the same participation in the junior and senior district level, that's a larger organization, Massachusetts is divided into five districts, we're part of the southeast district. So all of the teachers involved in these, in those grade levels are very, very active in those outside organizations to help give our students the best opportunity they can have at these regional music festivals. Also, a few weeks ago, I was lucky enough to work the Allstate Music Festival, we had two students, two juniors, John Gillig on the violin and Clay Emel on trombone, were selected to participate in the Allstate Orchestra this year, I happened to be manager this year, so I got to spend the whole festival time in those rehearsals and helping facilitate those rehearsals, and these extra opportunities are really, really a great chance for students who are more advanced to meet other students like them and to work at a high level, and I know they find it very rewarding. Allstate culminated with a performance at Symphony Hall. We have developed some mentor programs, Band Buddies is a program that the 5th grade band and the high school band students have, have in order to pair up with each other and support each other through their learning process, it's been really successful. We have a number of groups perform in the community at Veterans Day, Memorial Day, students go caroling, we have many chamber ensembles that go out and play at parties and weddings and holiday festivities, things like that. And we've been collaborating with other departments within the Hingham schools, namely the drama department, the most readily, we're all very busy getting ready for our spring production at the Middle School of Beauty and the Beast, that involves a ton of music students, as well as the drama students and all the different teachers. We also work very closely with the South Shore Conservatory, which is an organization in town that offers private lessons and workshops and masterclasses and instrumental ensembles as well, and we're thrilled to work with them as often as we do. We feel that our strengths, in addition to the, all of the activities that we have, we're a very, very active music department, and our strengths really, really start with the personnel and the highly-trained music teachers that we have in our district. Our district attracts very qualified, specialized candidates, because we show that those, we're all allowed to teach in our field of expertise, basically. The quality of our performances and our experiences that we offer the students are, it's really quite high, and I think if anyone has ever been to one of these all-town concerts that involve hundreds and hundreds of students, the progression from the beginning stages to the more advanced stages is very, is obvious, and is something that is really neat to see unfold in front of you. We're lucky to have administrative support here, of course, we've been working, just some of the things that we've been working on are rearranging some of our repair budget so that we can afford to repair more instruments, in addition to tuning all the pianos district-wide. We're having some capital for new school instruments that we're going to be planning on. The new middle school facilities have been a tremendous boost to the music department, not just at the middle school, but high school events we've been holding there as well, we're fortunate enough to have the space now and the classroom space and the audition, auditorium space, excuse me, to host one of these district festivals. So we're actually hosting the Junior SEMSPHA Festival the first weekend in May at the middle school. It'll really help, first of all, to show off our, our own students who have made the festival, but also to show students who maybe have not participated or auditioned for a festival like that, what that's all about. It's going to be a really tremendous thing, so we're excited to offer that, and we're excited to have some continued collaboration with any music staff hiring that we have coming up. Another strength, of course, our student body is incredibly involved, they're very committed, enthusiastic, talented, very, very smart students, probably among the most hard-working and active members of the school communities that they're parts of, they're all very well-rounded, and more importantly, we give the students an opportunity to really become leaders throughout the years. In addition to our students and of course our teachers, music teachers, we are lucky to have the parental support that we have in the community for these types of offerings. We had, like I just mentioned, we came back from New York just late last night, we brought eight wonderful parent chaperones with us who volunteered and paid to come and help 100 students move around New York City, for which we're very, very appreciative, it was wonderful. And last but not least, of course, our Hingham Music Parents Association is our support system, they help us with advocacy and fundraising, help us offer grants to the music department, they help raise the money for festival fees for the students that have auditioned for outside festivals, and they help us bring in outside performing groups, like recently we had one of our high school graduates, Nat Sealan, his band, his professional, Klesmer Band Ezekiel's Wheels came to perform at the middle school, and they did a workshop at the high school as well, which was tremendously successful and very exciting and inspiring for us as well as the students. So those are all things that we do, thanks to support of the community, the administration, the parents, specifically the HMPA. In the Hingham schools, we feel we have the following opportunities for growth and some improvement, and I should add to this, that it's not just for growth and improvement, but really for maintaining the programs and the excellence that we have currently. The first four points up there are somewhat interconnected in the sense that at the grade five level specifically in our schools, we feel that we can make the most, the most improvement. We know that we have an elementary general music specialist added, and we're planning on that and that it's in the budget, I know it's not official till it's official, but that would give us a full-time classroom music specialist at every elementary school, and with that, hopefully we can potentially reinstate grade five general music. Grade four is really too, too early in a child's life to stop learning about the foundations of music. The grade five students are required currently to take band chorus or orchestra, but those involve, of course, all highly-specialized skills and, you know, learning how to play an instrument for the first time, and learning how to maybe read a different clef for their music, and those teachers are also asked to continue with that general music foundation in addition to all of the new skills that they're teaching. The grade five ensembles, the schedule is essentially that the students who are in grade five are supposed to have a large ensemble day where the teacher sees all of the students at once who are in grade five band, for example, and then they're supposed to have smaller days where one 5th grade teacher's students who are in band go to the band teacher that day to get a more individualized experience for help in various situations. That is something that has gotten lax over the years, and now instead of just one grade five teacher's students, small day has become maybe up to three different classroom teachers' students all at once, which makes it very, very similar to a large ensemble day, which does not give the 5th grade specialists of band chorus or orchestra the kind of one-on-one time they need for students who are just starting out in this, in this field. The teaching spaces at the elementary school are limited, the ensembles are all offered at the same time, and of course, it's hard to find a large ensemble room, you know, that's big enough and equipped to hold music classes, that means there should be some kind of sound system, there should be some kind of smartboard, blackboard, or whiteboard in there for a teacher to use, music stands and chairs, of course, in all of those spaces, and that's challenging. In, you know, I'm lucky in that when I teach at the 7th, 7th through 12th grade, and so I've been teaching here since 2001, and not once have I ever been asked to leave my rehearsal space or my class space unexpectedly, there's not been a single day that I didn't realize, that I didn't know ahead of time where I was going to be teaching. At the elementary level, that doesn't always happen, sometimes things come up and these teachers get pushed into situations that make it difficult for them to do their job and teach. that make it difficult for them to do their job and teach successfully. And it turns into, you know, fifteen minutes of setting up chairs, fifteen minutes of breaking down chairs and the, and the class is over. So, those are all things that interconnected, we think we can improve upon. I've invited Brian Senkata here to talk a little bit more about that and in just a minute, just from a teacher's perspective. In addition to those things at the fifth grade level, we would love to have full ensemble possibilities at the middle school. Right now, the ensembles meet in smaller sections and then come together just at the last minute before a concert in maybe like a one afternoon kind of thing or one, one hour or so in the evening. It's better than not having it at all, but it's definitely something that we would like more of, hopefully in the schedule. We used to be able to have in-school field trips that would allow us maybe four times a year or three times a year to have combined rehearsals during the school day so we could ensure that most, as many of students, of the students were there as possible. So, we'd like to explore that a little bit more. I'd like to see more organized mentorship programs from within the department, from teacher to teacher, to help encourage students to continue throughout their career here. I'd love to have more exposure to professional musicians, much like the Ezekiel's Wheels performance while we were just in New York. Having the students see this, to see the New York Philharmonic was tremendously exciting for them. And we really should be doing more of that, and that's, that's one of my goals. Lastly, we have some inequity with our stipends for after-school select ensembles. One of the, the jazz band stipend is not the same as the rest of them, but the work is the same and the hours are the same. So, that's something we'd like to work on. But, to speak a little bit more about the, basically the fifth grade situation that we'd like to improve upon, I've invited Brian Senkata here to give you his perspective.
So, as I said earlier, I'm Brian Senkata. I'm the director of bands for both grade seven and grade eight at the middle school and all grades at the high school. And while I'd be delighted to speak to you about the continued success and growth we're achieving at these levels, I'm going to instead offer some insight regarding the situation at the foundation of our instrumental program at the fifth grade at our elementary schools. When communities, administrators and faculties attempt to evaluate their music programs, it's often done by considering the quality of instruction and performance taking place at the secondary level. To be fair, the listening experience there is typically far more enjoyable. Ensembles and individual students can demonstrate quantifiable measures of achievement from acceptance to local and regional honor festivals, gold medal ratings for our groups on performance tours and admission to prestigious college music programs for our most dedicated seniors. As a result, support, attention and the respect afforded to our department by these parties is directed at this level. However, just as the integrity of any structure is dependent on its foundation, the truly essential, impactful and ultimately life-altering work in our program is taking place in our fifth grades where in-class instruction, instrumental instruction, rather, begins. It's here where habits are formed, passions are kindled and lifelong loves of the art form are created. It's the focal point around which our entire department revolves and it's not getting the support it deserves. When I began teaching in Hingham ten years ago, it was at the elementary level. Our system of pull-out lessons was designed so that I taught in two different settings per cycle. One small group lesson comprised of the students from a single teacher's classroom and one full rehearsal with all the band students in the grade. This not only gave my new musicians exposure to a full ensemble experience, but also gave them the individual attention that is absolutely essential to succeed in band. Beginning lessons in a group setting with mixed instrumentation are enormously difficult to teach effectively. Imagine being a foreign language instructor, being presented with a class of students where some were trying to learn French, others Mandarin, some Russian and some Arabic, all in the same, at the same time in the same room. Now add the necessity for differentiated instruction, adherence to a variety of ed plans and give each student a shiny toy capable of producing an almost alarming amount of noise, you'll see that, that things ramp up fairly quickly. This analogy translates quite easily to the music classroom. While flutes, trumpets, violins and cellos are all musical instruments, the technique, approach, necessary skills and even means of identifying the symbols on the page are profoundly different. You can't tell everyone to play a C because each instrument's C sounds at a different pitch. The instruments don't share common fingerings or means of producing a sound. In an ideal world, and as is the case in many other comparable districts, teachers would receive small groups not by class but by like instrument until they're competent enough to be combined together. In my experience, the small heterogeneous groups I taught were manageable enough and the size meant that I could target students in need of individual help and address their concerns without breaking the flow of the lesson plan. The impressive playing you hear from our high school groups is the product of this system. In the years since I've left the post, these small group lessons have progressively become larger and larger for band, orchestra and chorus. In the name of common planning time, simplified scheduling and other factors, these pull-out lessons now are comprised of two or often three classroom teachers, band students, sometimes totaling thirty or more. Time is spent demonstrating slide positions to trombonists while a dozen clarinet players grow restless. Transitions are far more frequent and more invasive. In the inherent noise and confusion, students fall behind. The baseline competency for entering sixth grade decreases, as does retention and by necessity, our expectation for learning. Issues at the fifth grade level continue beyond class size, as Phaedra mentioned. Ensemble rehearsals are frequently moved without warning due to space conflicts with other school-wide events. They are often taught in rooms without pianos, stereos or the other equipment fundamental to the music-making process. They're likened to a club rather than a serious academic and artistic pursuit that while certainly humble in its beginnings, produces powerful and moving dividends as it progresses. As a department, we've always been aware that our attention belongs with our youngest musicians and as a community and district, we need to start beginning the process of doing the same. Creative new approaches to scheduling, increased staffing, courtesy with regards to instructional time and an increased understanding of the enormity of the task are essential to maintaining our high standards. We need to reevaluate how we value music education at the elementary level and the role that it plays in our students' lives. I can't tell you how many phone calls and emails I receive each year from parents of prospective students looking to move to Hingham, each with the quality of the music program at the forefront of their decision-making process. Our department is often the sole reason that serious academically motivated students don't apply to private schools or in many cases, why they decide to return to us after a year at B.C. High or Thayer. We're immensely proud of the work we do and the overwhelming personal, emotional and intellectual growth our students receive as a result of their time in our classrooms. We, of course, thank you for our continued support in our endeavors and appreciate your willingness to work with us to improve as we attempt to share with our students one of humanity's most defining characteristics in appreciation of the arts.
I also invited one of these students who are, who's a product of our, of our system. Ellie Cope is a senior at Hingham High School right now and member of the String Orchestra, Chamber Orchestra, Symphony Orchestra. Any other orchestra. Avid, yeah, AP Music Theory student. And I invited her to come, share a little bit of her perspective, being a product of our department, for you. Ellie?
Hi, everybody. This is so educational. I'm learning so much about our department. So, as Mrs. Sano said, my name is Ellie. I play the violin in the orchestra at the Hingham High School. I've been involved in the music department since third grade, when third grade was offered for strings and band. And I've actually been involved with the, with the arts and music since I was much younger. My parents are actually quite musical. My mom teaches piano at my house. Very loud, but very enjoying. And my stepdad also is a piano teacher. He teaches at South Shore Conservatory, but he also teaches at the house as well, which is nice and, and very nice to have in the background of everything that I do is always piano in the background. But, growing up with so much music in, in my life has been just so great. But, but coming into the music department at the high school and at the elementary school level and middle school level has, has changed my life even more, actually. And just coming from such a, just piano background, I was encouraged to play piano when I was much younger. So, that was very strict in, in my life, which I can relate to, to a lot of other people. A lot of other kids who are, who are very encouraged to do certain sports and certain other academic interests and other arts interests. It's, it's violin and strings and band and when you're much younger is sort of an escape. It's a way to express yourself. And that's what I experienced personally. And it was so nice in elementary school. I remember Mr. Turner, oh my god, so weird. I've seen so long. And entering middle school, which I call, it's not the dark years, but like, maybe, maybe I'd call that. Meeting Mrs. Sano in seventh grade was just so fantastic. I've expressed in, in as many ways as possible how much she means to me. And just seventh and eighth grade is when you were finally together and in more orchestra. And it was just so nice being with a bunch of older people who are only a year older than you, actually. But, but sitting next to them was just so, so great, mentors having, having mentors like that. And just the importance of Band Buddies, as she expressed earlier. And we do secret psych buddies. We still do them. They're so great. You give a little gift to a, a middle school or elementary school kid just to, before a concert, just to pump them up and just get them excited for the concert because who, but what better way to pump up a kid than candy and, and letters of just excitement. So, in middle school, playing more advanced stuff, Mrs. Sano starts conducting you. You start to build a trust with her as a conductor. And I've experienced it with many conductors through SEMSPBA districts, but, but Mrs. Sano is definitely the one that you build the most, best relationship with. And everybody around you, you build a trust with, especially if you're leading a section, which I have before. You build a trust with the people in back of you and, and the people around you. And you have to be listening to every single part of the orchestra, which is very difficult, but I'm still learning. But, you have to trust everybody behind you to be dependent and playing what they're supposed to be playing. And you yourself, you have to have the confidence to, to accept their criticism, which, which happens sometimes, especially. But, and you also have the confidence to give them some advice and them, you advice, and that happens more in the middle school time. So, high school, transition into high school, there's always a big ref, as I expressed at the all-town concert. Recently, I gave a little speech just to pump the kids up and make sure that, try to just give a little encouragement to stick with music in high school. And very difficult to explain how much the music program has meant to me throughout high school, throughout these four years. High school is, is a big proportion of your life. I mean, college is even bigger, but I don't want to think about that right now. Walking into school freshman year, it's so nice just to walk into a classroom when you, when you don't really know where you are in the high school and walk into classrooms such as the orchestra room and see just somebody that you completely know, Mrs. Sano. And everybody around you is so welcoming and you already know them and it's, it's just the greatest experience. And having everybody, we talked about like random things and, and just music in general. Everybody's there for one thing and that's to just enjoy music. It's just such a relief and such a sanctuary. But, you learn more than music in, in that setting and you learn leadership, which I've, I've learned throughout leading sections and not even leading sections. You just have to be a leader to everybody around you and just trust everyone around you. You make such great friends with everybody that's there. So many of my friends live, just not live, are in the music department with me and just like are around me all the time. And the trips just solidify, it was just great. You trust everyone around you. You build relationships with your teachers. As I said at the all-town concert, it's basically like a sports team, except you're all there for the same reason, except, you know, like it's better because you don't have to exercise and stuff. That's just what I said. There's lots of bonding with your peers. You're all there for one reason, that's to make music. But, we do secret psych buddies. We've done Secret Santa at Chamber, which was really funny. We go on trips. There's lots of Chipotle nights, which I also expressed at the all-town concert that I've probably eaten more Chipotle in the last four years than I will for the rest of my life, which is ridiculous, but so amazing. There's so much bonding that happens. And in high school, I also created with two of my other friends, a club called BOC, B-O-C-C, which is funny because it's like the composer, yeah. It's, it stands for B-O-C-C, Band Orchestra Course Community. And our goal is to just, just fuse the community and the music program together with the kids and just develop community service. We've gone to retirement homes and we've sang with the senior citizens, which is so fun. We sang Christmas carols and just stuff like that. And we've had day of lessons where we had some older high school kids teach one-on-one lessons with younger elementary school and some middle school kids, just to encourage them to take private lessons themselves and to just encourage them to just keep playing. And that was really fun and we had a really good time with that and just individual attention. What we also do is go on trips, as Mrs. Sano said, over the weekend. We were in New York, which was great. It's crazy to have a hundred kids roaming around one of the biggest cities, which was so crazy, but so much fun. We went and saw the Philharmonic. We saw Juilliard and we saw BAM, which is Brooklyn Academy of Music, which is very avant-garde as we were taught there. We saw all sides of the music spectrum and I was particularly, I think everybody there was very humbled to see at Juilliard, like fourteen-year-olds playing like shredding on the piano, which was just so impressive. And I mean, I felt like I was in a movie, but it was just, it was amazing. But, considering just everybody's, so much talent there. So, my future, because of all of this that I've just, I've just explained, I've, throughout these past years, I've decided to become a music educator like my teachers. Majoring in music education at college. Next year, I'm going to Penn State for it. It runs in my family, but I mean, there are other contributing factors, such as just great teachers. And I mean, every single day in orchestra is like an observation day, which Mrs. Sano might not realize, but I'm literally observing everything that she's doing, no pressure. But, but I mean, taking AP Theory with Mr. Senkata has been amazing, too. It makes me realize how much I don't know about music and how much I want to learn about it as well. And I mean, working with kids is a passion of mine and a duty of the summer and despite still being a kid, I like working with them a lot. So, I, looking at the curriculum for college next year, there, you just, you can see the curriculum online of what I have to do next year, which are, you learn various types of music. You learn music history, just more music theory. You learn core classes about education, which, which I'm already learning a lot about here. But, you just have to be passionate about, about it all and just build trust between students and teachers and everything that I've, I've witnessed in, in these classroom environments and, and just in orchestra and AP Theory. You have to know leadership. You, you have to inspire kids, which they do every day and I've experienced it firsthand. You've got to know teamwork. You have to make them comfortable in their environment and happy. And I've just experienced all these things, which just attests to how great the music program is here. And to know the psychology of adolescents, which, I mean, I'm an adolescent. I don't really know what that means because I'm still figuring that out, but I'll, I'll learn that. I'll let you know. And this music department has just meant so much to, to me that I personally have decided to continue on with it for the rest of my life. And I hope I can, as well as them, inspire people, more kids to do the same like these teachers have done to me. And they're just, they're so great. So, thank you, everyone, for letting me speak.
Thank you, Ellie.
So, if anybody had any additional questions or comments, I would.
Andy?
Really more for Mr. Senkata?
No, thank you very much, Phaedra. So, you mentioned creative way of scheduling. What'd you mean by that?
Well, I'm hoping that, you know, with an increased staff member, right? With an additional general music class in fifth grade, there's got to be something that could be done in terms of sending a portion of students to that class to, to keep common planning time between classroom teachers while limiting the number of students that are traveling to an ensemble rehearsal. So, we'd use the same block of time, but distribute the kids differently throughout that elective space to, to reduce the number of students that are receiving instructional time. I mean, if that were the case, you could potentially not even send a single classroom teacher, but as we'd hope, you know, in the pie in the sky here, that we could send the clarinet players or the viola players. And given a bit more flexibility there, you know, the, the possibilities are endless in terms of improving the quality of instruction they're getting at that level.
Because I, because I said a couple of years ago, and I just look at this from a, an educator's point of view, I don't like, to me, it concerns me that you guys are moving around so much. And when I look in the chart here between the elementary schools, Bellis, Abrams and, I'm going to pronounce the name incorrectly. Gorsika, thank you. I mean, they're, they go to all four different elementary schools. And I know it's the, the cycle. I thought at one point, does it make sense, you know, to block things off where, you know, Bellis works in east from, you know, Jan, September to November and then the other people, you know, so you, they're always there for a group of time. Is there any other ways to get this better instead of? Because I'm always concerned that the teachers, you guys, the educators, are moving around so much.
I agree.
Sure.
We agree. It would be great to have more instructional time and less travel time in general, I think, from everybody. And the only, and because the schools are on different schedules throughout the day with the buses and dismissal and everything like that, that makes, that's certainly challenging. We, we truly believe that the individual teachers and their strengths and their specialties, specifically classroom music or chorus or band or orchestra, are allowed to teach just those things. So, to some degree, that's why those teachers move around because Ms. Bellis is our band's, elementary band specialist and Ms. Gorsika's our elementary string specialist and so on. So, in that sense, we'd like to have them still, you know, teach those ensembles. There are some additional things, though. There are a couple recorder classes that Ms. Bellis and Ms. Gorsika pick up out of necessity that take them in other directions throughout the day. And that would be something that if we could, if we have that fourth elementary, that dedicated elementary specialist, classroom specialist, could take that back on. And we could, you know, arrange things a little bit differently that way. But, it's also important that we, you know, they teach to their strengths.
And one more question for you. Sorry about that. I know people have approached you about a high school marching band. Now, I'm biased because I love college football. I've been to the Ohio State, Michigan State, Michigan game many times. Both bands have more than four hundred members strong. There's a logistical issue. I know you've told people.
There, there is. So, I'm a product of a very strong marching program. It's something that I care very deeply about. I was the drum major of my high school marching band. I went to two summers of the Drum Major Academy out at UMass Amherst. So, I'm, I have a plume in a box at my house. So I have a plume in a box at my house. So it's something that I care deeply about. I also care deeply about the general quality of music education. From a community standpoint, it makes perfect sense why having a marching band would be an excellent morale booster, it'd be great for a variety of community events. I feel like our strength in providing our students with the highest level of music education brings us in different directions in terms of offering evening activities like our chamber ensembles, like our jazz band. It also takes up an enormous amount of the educator's time, whether it's over summers, prepping for football field shows, it would require an enormous amount of additional budgeting, you wouldn't need just uniforms for one student, but uniforms for students that would grow over time, which they all would. The various other additional components such as flip folders that hold small pieces of music, lyres that attach them to your instruments. We have developed a student-run pep band that runs when it can, but I think that that leads back to the larger problem, which is that our students in Hingham are involved in so many different things, particularly when it comes to both music and athletics, that it makes it difficult, you know, in my high school, marching band was my sport. I didn't, you know, we had evening rehearsals when other kids were doing soccer practice. I think because our kids are so well-rounded and because they're involved in so many things, that a compulsory marching band program would end up limiting the number of students that wanted to take band in the first place, because they wouldn't be able to attend our rehearsals or it would conflict with their games or, for example, they would want to be on the football team rather than marching at halftime, which tends to be the case. So it's a balancing act, right? I want to be supportive of the community, which I feel like we do in a variety of ways, whether it's performing at Veterans Day or Memorial Day, graduation, at the opening of the new athletic complex earlier this year. And having, giving the students the opportunity to lead their own pep band when possible would give the same kind of morale boosting experience that a marching band would, but it's just difficult. I hope that answers the question.
No, I mean, obviously, a lot of people ask that question a lot and I know that people have talked to you and so I thought it was a good opportunity for...
Oh, definitely.
To explain it. Dot, could you maybe tell us, we used to have a marching band.
Many years ago, yes, we did.
So what happened?
Exactly what Brian is talking about, that we have lots and lots of kids that want to do everything in high school and overall, that's a good thing. But when you make something like a marching band a requirement of being in a band, it's a challenge and kids have to make choices. And already, the music program as a whole, just by its nature, requires kids to make a lot of choices, because most of our subjects that are honors level subjects, take AP just as one example, those programs are specific to a grade. Music is nine through 12 in most of the groups that we offer. And so music almost has to be scheduled before any other academic. So we end up with, singletons in particular, and those of course, there's only one section offered, and many of them are honors level or AP, kids have to choice, have a choice between music and physics or music and chemistry. And so it's not good for kids to have to make those choices. They do. Often the choice is music. I think overall, in that choice-making thing, music is the winner, because kids have had a music experience all the way through and want to continue it. But we're already making an awful lot of decisions and that's one of the things that happened with the marching band is, you know, certainly cost was an impact, although we tended to use the same uniforms year after year after year, whether the kids grew or not. It took a long time, but...
I would also like to add...
But I think Brian gave a good synopsis of why it...
I think there's also a very conscious effort to move towards art music and to give these kids a sophisticated experience and learn some repertoire that requires a lot more than maybe the kind of music that would be on a football field part of the season or something like that. In addition to losing kids, because we have tons of sports captains in our groups, we have tons of kids who are athletes across the board, most of them do something. And not only would that obviously cut our numbers significantly or, you know, alter football's numbers maybe significantly, but it's really important to remember that these kids are learning this for music's sake and not just for the support of a very successful athletic department.
That's fine, just keep one thing in mind, we have 1,200 kids at the high school right now.
Yes.
The class of 2021 is 1476. So you're going to have more than a 20% surge in possible candidates that, you know, so when you talk about resources, talk about budgets, keep those in the back of your mind because we're not going to be able to maintain a 70% participation rate in athletics.
Mm-hmm.
That's going to go down and we're going to need other activities. So it might be opportunistic or an opportunity, and I'm not saying a marching band.
Right, there could be other music...
You know, I'm thinking kids like from Hingham probably have a Yale personality where that band is very creative where they run around, not like marching staff, but, so that's what I'm just saying. Anybody else? Dennis?
So I was just, as I was going through your program and I saw that, I got this vision for the future and opportunities, there's a lot of opportunities for improvement, which is great.
Yeah.
On the other hand, while I tend to have an abundance mentality, there's no question that it's a little bit of a zero-sum game, especially in the scheduling piece. So I would, you know, not ask you to do it here, but, you know, suggest that anything that you, you know, as you said, if you can come up with creative ways to provide, you know, all the clarinet players to come out or to add the general music back into the fifth grade or things like that, I'm sure that the administration would be thrilled to work on those additional scheduling opportunities as to how that, you know, whether any of those things can work out or not.
Yeah, and I think it's a matter of balance, because for the, we certainly understand what the music department wants to provide. The issue that we have, certainly in the last 10 years, is more and more demands on the academic time. And so when you separate out to do the things that are important in that discipline, things get squeezed in other ways. So it's really a matter of trying to find a balance to get the best we can with all the considerations. And Phaedra's going to be coming to a meeting with Ellen and the elementary principals in the near future and to talk about the whole scheduling piece and we'll do what we can, but it's a challenge. The other challenge at the elementary level is because the music can be disruptive in the sense of not taking a whole class all the time, which then could be a planning time for teachers, if you're taking the clarinet players at one time and you're taking the tuba players at another time and so on, that means that teachers have a block of time when they don't have their whole class. You don't want that to occur all that often. So there's a real challenge around taking pieces of classes rather than the whole class. And so, you know, we'll look at all the ideas, I think we all get the goals and what can we do to get...
And the only thing, and again, I'm not obviously familiar with how it's done in various locations, but you know, you may find, you may have models at other schools around the area or outside of the area that would, you know, creative models that say, you know, here's what you do, you take all the clarinet players out and then you take all the, you know, the whatever out and, you know, kids go to one classroom, however it is. So again, I don't know, I don't know how that works, but, you know...
But because they come as a team, which is great on the one hand, that the band, orchestra and choral groups all meet at the same time, that forces then, you need three big spaces. Well, elementary schools have an auditorium, not an auditorium, a cafetorium or cafeteria, and they have a gym, but those are in use many parts of the day for other things. And then that gets into, if you have to have a special assembly, then music can't meet at that time. So those are the kinds of things that interrupt your program in the same way that sometimes the things you wanted to interrupt the academic program. But we have so many more demands academically than we ever did and that's a huge piece of it. But it's good to know what it is, the target is, it's the how of getting there that's going to be the challenge, so.
Anybody else?
I just want to thank you for, all of you, for your passion, because it really shows and I've seen it in the concerts and I see it in the kids and that's what makes the program so great. And I've known Ellie for many, many years and I know her passion for music and so thank you for being here tonight and for being for the kids and, you know, being involved with their lives so much and putting in the extra effort.
Thank you.
It's what makes Hingham special, of having so many different opportunities for all the different kids that we have, so thank you.
Yeah, and I'd just like to say, you should really feel good about the program that you offer and the work that you do with the kids at all levels. I have four children and I've experienced all of the offerings, from after-school strings to chorus to orchestra to band, the whole, you know, recorder, the whole, everything. And each has been rewarding in its own way for each of my kids and it's really been a great experience to go through it all. You know, I hear from other folks in other towns about our music and theater programs, right? And one of the reasons why we pushed so hard to get that auditorium at the middle school when we were designing was because of our robust, that's, I quoted that, right? Robust music and theater programs. It was really important because the design the MSBA offers is a cafetorium.
Right.
You know, we were going after a model that had an auditorium, so that was a benefit. You know, we had an existing auditorium at our middle school, that was a benefit, but we really pushed hard because of our programs and, you know, it's great that we can have that facility for the programs that we offer. So really feel good about the work that you're doing with the kids, you are reaching all of them, you know, from Ellie back before third grade all the way. And I was impressed, I was at that concert when you spoke, the orchestra concert, that was great, really enjoyed that, good luck in school and thanks for giving back as a teacher. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
John, the bus lease.
If John's going to do that, I'm going to set up the...
For a budget.
So we went out for a lease for the big yellow buses, you know, 19 regular ones and one special bus, a 77-passenger or a 66-passenger bus. And the difference between the one is it has a wheelchair lift on it. So the, we, I structured this bid so that it would be a one-year lease with two one-year renewals, you know, as we talked about, instead of going out for new buses this year, our buses now are eight years old. By the time, you know, we, what we did was we said we'd accept eight-year-old buses this year, nine-year-old buses next year and a 10-year-old bus in the third year. And then also, the lease was also structured such that if we, basically, how much for a bus for this year, how much for a bus next year and how much for the third year? And how much would be off that price of bus if we didn't take all the buses? You know, thinking that next year we could potentially go out for half of a new fleet and keep half the old one and then the year after, get the other half and then get rid of the other older bus. So I don't envision that we'd ever have 10-year-old buses in service. So that's the way this bid was structured. In our budget assumptions, we put in a 5% increase estimated. The actual, when we came back, we only had one bidder, we sent it out to about, there were several bidders that we sent it out to, but only one bidder came back, it was our existing bidder, First Student, and they came back with rates that represented a 3% increase from the previous year's cost. You know, so with that, I think that's fair, we've taken a little benefit, it's about $8,000 or $8,800 less than what was in the budget assumption. And they're in charge of maintaining these buses, okay? So this is a full-service lease, so basically on this lease, if the bus breaks down, they need to get it fixed. If it's a lemon, they'd have to give us a replacement. Right now, they keep a couple spares on our lot, they've always been there to service their buses. There's a mechanic on duty every morning from 6:00 to 10:00 to make sure those buses get started. If a bus doesn't start in the afternoon, they get called up, they send, you know, emergency personnel so that we get that bus fixed or we have the spare that would be available to us. So, you know, by and large, when you look at it, our transportation runs pretty smooth here in Hingham and I think a lot of that is a tribute. First Student has done a good job in providing the service that we really need out of this bus lease. So a good vendor, I think that the rate is, the best rate we could get considering that only one company bid. It is significantly lower than the cost we would have experienced if we had gone out this year with new buses, but in light of the budget being so tight, we did want to sort of defer that a year. So, you know, with that, I think this is a good bid and I would recommend that the school committee, you know, approve it for, you know, FY16 and in the, with 3% increase for the amount of $453,817. And that would be for 19 buses in one, which is what our plan would be for next year. Of course, you know, if we reduce a bus or if we went up a bus, it would be, there's a per-bus rate that's in the contract. This is multiplied out by all the number of buses.
John, what did you say the savings was over what you budgeted?
$8,817.
That represents the 2% differential, right? 5% you budgeted and it's only a 3% increase.
Yeah, right, yeah, I think it came out 2.9, somewhere around there.
John, right, this year we're working with eight-year-old buses?
That's correct, Ed, yep.
And what's been the challenge in the morning? I mean, how have we done this year or how are we doing this year with eight-year-old buses?
Yeah, there's some, there's a few issues, but by and large, we're doing very good.
Have you ever had a situation where we didn't have a bus, enough buses to go?
Not one they told me about. No, I, no, I, you know, we are getting the kids back to and from school every day, you know, without fail. I haven't heard of any failures, so, you know, they do a good job.
Even during the weather that we had, which is incredible, really.
Do they have two backups?
Yeah, they, the contract requires one backup, but, you know, First Student's a very large provider, so they provide an additional backup. Typically, there's always two spares on our lot, because if one goes down, they're going to go take that. Now you only have your 20 buses, but you still need a spare in case another one should go down. So they don't have to be the same age, they could be a little bit older as long as they're a decent running bus, so that we can, you know, manage our objective, which is to get kids safely to and from school. So it's worked out pretty well.
So did they also bid a percentage increase in years two and three?
Yeah, that's what I wanted to ask, what, can you explain the renewal option?
Yeah, the, so the renewal options, it would be, it would be a similar increase, okay? So, and I could share, I'm sorry, I didn't itemize all of these here, but it would be, it's gone up about 2.9% a year, 2.91% each of the years.
Would that be the two option years as well?
That's correct, yep. But the, there is a credit for whatever the, for whatever the value of a bus would be that next year, if you don't take the bus, you don't pay for the bus, okay? And in the spec, I did say, you know, we could go down, you know, 10 buses or more buses. So I gave them an idea of, you know, what we were thinking about in terms of trying to, you know, go out for new buses. So there should be no surprise about, you know, what we sort of intend to do, you know, whether it be half a fleet or whether it be somewhat less than half a fleet.
Want to vote motion? I'll make a motion that we award a one-year contract to First Student in the amount of $453,817 along with two one-year renewal options.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
That's good work, John. Okay, so, just, we thought we were done with the budget? Pull us back in.
All right, so I committed to giving you an update tonight and a plan for how we can close a gap that exists between the school committee vote on the budget, which was back on March 2nd, and then the votes of the advisory committee and the Board of Selectmen that also came along during that time. And that is assuming that the school committee may want to consider at least whether or not they want to revoke the budget prior to a town meeting. So that's what this effort is, it's a plan, proposal if you will. It is not something that I would even want you, let alone expect you, to vote tonight because I think there are a couple of pieces in it that really require some thinking and there may be some alternatives and as well, prior... And as well, prior to the next school committee meeting, and I think we're going to talk about that date a little bit later this evening, but prior to that, there could also be some additional changes that we would want to update this, this proposal. So, here is a record, and those of you, I think you all have a packet that has much of what's in the slideshow in it as well. So here's the record of the votes that were, that were taken, the school committee vote that was taken on March second, and that total budget vote on March second was forty-five eight five eight seven oh two. It was a five point four four percent increase at that time. That's the total. When I say total operating budget, that means the regular education piece, the special education piece, and the small vocational education piece. The education subcommittee made a recommendation to the advisory committee, and that happened on the third, well, first of all, the education subcommittee recommended a budget, and that happened on the third of, of March. And then subsequent to that, you'll see down further, the advisory committee in its total voted, voted that same number, and that number was forty-five four one three seven twenty, and that represented four point four two percent increase over the prior year. The selectmen also voted, and they voted on March fifth, and their vote was consistent with that that had been recommended by the subcommittee, and that ultimately was voted by the education, by the full advisory committee, that same four point four two percent. So there is a difference, obviously, in, between those, those numbers, and that difference or gap, as we'll call it throughout this presentation, is in the amount of four hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars. So in order for the school committee to come in at a budget that is at the forty-five four one three figure, we've got to find savings or ways of accommodating that, that difference. So, so that's the history of what has happened and where we are now with that gap. The last time the school committee addressed the budget was at its March second meeting, where they actually took a vote. And the vote that the school committee took on that night was for combined budget of forty-five eight five eight seven oh two. That figure reflected the fact that we had already reduced our initial request by seven hundred thirteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars. So, so that figure represented a significant reduction from the original budget. It's broken down in here, here into the other categories, but the important figure is the forty-five eight five eight seven oh two, and the other important thing, at least it was, is the fact it represented a significant reduction from the original, original request. So we need to think about closing the gap. The school committee vote is there from the prior page, forty-five eight five eight seven oh two. The Board of Selectmen and AdCom votes are there, they're, the same figure was voted, and that reflects a four point four two percent increase. And there's that gap figure again, four 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 nine eight two. There's a dollar difference between where we were looking at Board of Selectmen and Advisory, and I'm sure that's rounding somewhere, so we'll use this, this number. So we set about looking for some other ways that we could find savings or reduce the bottom line, and we're going to present some of those to you tonight. And that's what the C next slide means. So we're going to recommend or propose that we can find savings additional to the tune of two hundred ninety-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars. And if, in fact, those are satisfactory reductions to make, we'd then be at forty-five five six four two one five. That's an increase of four point seven seven percent, but we still would not be at the figure that the advisory committee and the Board of Selectmen voted. We will, at that point, after tonight, have made a million, eight thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars in reductions, but there would be a remaining gap in order to get to that common vote of advisory and selectmen of a hundred fifty thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars. So, so the next two slides will show you the proposed reductions, and then some things to think about as to how we could close the remaining gap of the hundred fifty thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars. So the categories, and we divided them into categories because it's important to know that we don't find savings in all the same ways. Sometimes we find savings by new information, sometimes we find savings by actually cutting things, and sometimes we look at things differently and try to find savings that way. So we looked first at real changes in circumstance. That's new information. Most of the time, new information is something like a retirement, a person who decides to take a full-year leave of absence, a student who doesn't need a tuition, either a special ed or vocational tuition. Most of the time, those are, are savings opportunities. So in this two hundred ninety-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollar proposal, we had an unanticipated retirement. That's a fairly small dollar savings, seventeen four ninety, because the person hasn't been with us for that many years and is not retiring at the maximum rate in terms of columns and degree status. So, but it is a savings of seventeen four ninety, and that savings is the difference between what the person is earning now and what we project her replacement would cost us. We found out recently that there will be a student who's in vocational school next year that will not be there net, this year, that will not be there next year, and so that's a savings. And our most expensive vocational school is Norfolk Aggie, and that's the tuition for a year for that student, twenty-three two seventy-two. That is not a cost that we will have for next year, new information. When we built the budget, and we had to put in tuition increases for all of the private schools and the collaborative schools that our special needs students attend, we estimated across the board that a three percent increase in those tuitions was likely, and that's the figure we've been carrying in the budget. Two things have happened in that regard. One thing that happened is that the collaborative program, and we have a fair number, I'd say forty to fifty percent of our special ed students who do go to out-of-district placements go to the collaborative program, and, and our collaborative, South Shore Collaborative, in fact, has already voted its budget for next year, and that budget will have an increase in tuitions of two and a half percent, not three. So we could reduce those three percents to two and a half. At the same time, I, something that I mentioned earlier, and that is that the governor came out with a statement at the time he released his budget, that he was going to hold the private school special ed tuitions flat, except for those schools who've asked for some extraordinary relief, they're called under-construction budgets. We don't happen to have any students this year in that small number of schools. And so, in fact, it may be that the three percent that we have in there for everybody now could, could be a zero percent increase, no increase at all, flat. However, because the budget hasn't yet been passed, and because we don't know what the impact of, of passing the final state budget will have on this particular category, we reduced the three percents to two and a half, but we didn't think it was prudent to reduce the three percents to zeros. So if, in fact, that statement that the governor's made about holding tuitions flat is accurate, then we would have an additional two and a half percent that we could reduce to zero for the private special ed placements. John mentioned the bus bid that came in, came in last Tuesday, I think. We got the bus bid, and there's the savings there, the eight thousand, eight hundred seventeen over what he projected that that cost was going to be. Now we have a real cost to put in place of a projection or an estimate, and that's that. Well, of course, that didn't get us to four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, so we needed to go back to look at the list of the new requests that we had put in. And so these, of course, would be real cuts, things that we feel we need, because there was a needs-based budget, but that we simply won't be able to provide. So the three things in that category are elimination of requested elementary math tutors, and this was largely around being able to provide the kind of individualized support, the RTI, if you will, model that we use for literacy for math, particularly for grades three through five. We already reduced that request, the original request, which was seventy-nine thousand dollars, by twenty thousand as one of our requests in the seven thirteen figure, but we've eliminated that entire request at this point. That's a savings of fifty-nine thousand, twenty-five dollars. We had requested some additional clerical support for this office, moving someone from thirty-five hour a week to forty hour a week, and by delaying the implementation of that, we can get to later in the year, not starting on July one, there would be a savings of seven thousand, forty-seven dollars. We had a maintenance position in this budget. It was in the budget last year. It was a restoration of one of the positions that we lost back in two thousand nine, ten, that we've been working to, to get back, and reluctantly, we, we had to reduce it. We, we do have in the budget the, the new position that would be for the maintenance manager and the procurement officer, that, that position that we've talked about a lot, that we feel very strong and that we need to have, so this, we felt we needed to sacrifice. We also wanted to keep in the budget some dollars that they, that we have there for the additional kinds of mowing and the additional field maintenance that, that goes with keeping our, what will be two new fields, the one that will be coming at the middle school and the high school, one in, in great shape. So that was a difficult reduction to make, but again, we're trying to find four hundred forty-five thousand dollars. So those were further reductions, real things that we wanted, but that we will have to give up, or at least that we're proposing we give up. So now, we, these next two things are things that we want to think about a lot, particularly the first one, and that's why I'm not looking for a vote tonight, but just some, some thinking. There was a lot of talk, and very legitimate talk, throughout the whole budget process, about the challenge of budgeting tuitions, of not, because tuitions for special ed can be so high, we can't afford to take a risk of, of something that we think is likely or highly likely at this time, but not yet in place, if not budgeting for it. But at the same time, over the last several years, we've been able to return at the end of the year some significant dollars to the town, because things do change, and we weren't, did not need to spend all the money we had originally appropriated. And when you don't spend all of your allocation, what happens is those dollars don't go to fill in for other needs in our budget or anybody else's budget in town. And in fact, dollars that get returned simply go to the reserve fund and drop to the bottom line, and, and they're lost to anyone's use for the year. So we thought a lot about ways we could perhaps do that, do that budget, didn't come up with a good solution, although good discussions about how we might self-insure in some way to cause that to happen. So at this point, as we look at our special education tuition situation, we still have a handful of youngsters that are likely or highly likely, and we, and they have names next to tuition amounts, and we feel we need to keep those in the budget. But we have two tuitions that those students are not yet there. There's, there's not a high, a specific high or likely need for those two positions. Likely, there will be a child who needs our community program, and one of them is in the community program, and we, a lot of our younger children with multiple disabilities are in that program. So that may come up as, as a need. And there, the second tuition that was there is for a collaborative placement at a school that will accept some of the children that we have that, that emerged during the year with some sort of an emotional behavioral component to their, to their disability. But they're not there right now as we speak. But what is there, we hope, with the help of town meeting, is that we do have a new revolving account that was established and approved last year, and approved at the state level as well. And there's a warrant item this year to actually put dollars into that in the amount of two hundred fifty thousand dollars at town meeting, and those dollars were, were recommended, if you will, or approved by both the Board of Selectmen and the advisory. So there will be a special account set up, and it'll have two hundred fifty thousand dollars in it, and it is specifically for tuitions and/or the transportations that might go with them, for unbudgeted or underbudgeted or unanticipated students. So any students who would come along at this point needing an out-of-district placement would fall into that category, where we could go to that particular fund and, and look to provide for those kids and any others that might come along as well. So that is a kind of insurance, if you will, or a level of competence. We are comfortable removing those two tuitions that don't have names next to them at this point, and saying, you know what, if they come along after budget, we now have a place that we can go to fund that. That's a total amount of a hundred thirteen thousand, thousand dollars. But you see, I have it listed there under creative savings, looking at things in a different way, and, you know, we want to have some further discussion about that and think about the implication. It is creative, whether it meets everyone's needs or not, I don't know. The other thing is John isn't, this is less creative, but still, it's going to take a little bit of work. You know, we, we make certain assumptions about when we go out to bid for, for fuel, and we have some locked-in dollars for the, the coming year that are in the budget, but John's going to take another look at those assumptions and see whether or not it's prudent to go out to bid at least for some, in a different way for at least some of those inclusion of fuel that isn't locked in, and that we think that, given the current rate of fuel, and if we judiciously decide how much we want to bid out, that there's some likely savings there. So the total, not including the fuel adjustment, because that's a work in project, in process, is two hundred ninety-four thousand, four hundred eighty-seven dollars. However, as we said before, that doesn't get us all the way to four forty-five, and in, in fact, there's a hundred fifty thousand dollars that's in addition, if you were to want to vote the same budget as AdCom and Selectmen. So what are the remaining options then for this gap? You know, I know that most people on the town side in Hangham and likely at town meeting wouldn't like, just trust me as an answer, so I tried to give you some thoughts that aren't yet known, final outcomes, but then kind of a bailout that we don't really want to do, but that could get us to, to where we need to be. So we still have those unknowns, the fuel savings, one, John's working on, we'll know that within a few days, likely. We anticipate there will be some additional personnel changes. There always are, although when, this is an odd year, there have not been as many of those as there have been in prior years, so that can come. We don't yet know the status and may not know the status of this flat tuition increase that the governor has recommended or stated will happen. We may not know that until the overall state budget is, is passed, but those are places where we could get savings. We always have an opportunity. We've never done this, and some people should argue, would argue, we never should do it. We get, circuit breaker reimbursements come in during the year. Dollars are coming in as we speak. And, and those dollars, we then use next year in the fall, when we do the budget for FY seventeen, and those dollars that are in that account become an offset. But many people use them in the year in which they could occur. And so, in fact, if we were short fifty thousand, let's say, we could go to that account, expend those dollars. It would have an impact on FY seventeen. No question it would have an impact somewhere else, and so you might argue, well, we shouldn't do that, and, and maybe we shouldn't. But it, at least would be a place that we could go if there were shortages that were just a small amount of money. However, there are real dollars in the budget still for two point six five FTEs, high school teachers. We had put in a request for three point six five high school FTEs. We took out one of those, and that's seven hundred thirteen thousand reduction. We don't really want to take out the others. This was not a category that the AdCom Subcommittee felt was in the category of level services. We kind of disagree with that, because we had a big bump up last year and the year before at the high school, and neither of those years did we get the request that we needed to fund that increase in enrollment. This year, there isn't a similar bump up, we think. This year, there isn't a similar bump up. We think overall, the high school enrollment is going to be flat. But because our needs weren't met in prior years, we saw this to be an important need. And so it's still in the budget, and it's in the amount of a hundred forty-six thousand five hundred twenty-three. It's real dollars. And so there is a way to get this gap that we have covered, looking at that instead. You notice I put it third on my list, but, you know, the school committee might say it belongs up there as in second place or first place. Full-day kindergarten budget has not changed since we first put it out there. It does have some assumptions built with it, and they may change. Right now, I'm thinking probably not three hundred students in fifteen sections, but very likely fourteen sections will be needed. So that budget has not changed. And those numbers are embedded in the current budget that we have at the figure that the school committee voted. But offsetting each one of those personnel costs, and they're all personnel costs, is the tuition reimbursement, not reimbursement, the tuition offset that brings the net impact on the budget to zero. So the numbers are in there, but the tuition offset is in there as well. And so that doesn't change and hasn't changed its bottom line. And even if we were to change the assumption about how many students, we would also have to change the assumption about the cost. The figure that I had noted here is that if we have fourteen sections of kindergarten and not fifteen, that's about eighty thousand dollars less of cost. Of course, it's also less in terms of the revenues that will come in from tuitions. And the capital request is the same as it was when it was voted by both the Selectmen and the Advisory Committee. We had requested a million two ninety-seven. The total that was recommended to the school department is nine eighty-eight, four eighty. And that does include a hundred seventy thousand, which is for depot parking lot restoration. And that's a common asset that the town shares. You know, the bus depot is there. In addition to our bus garage, the fuel depot is there. And all of the towns benefit from that space, and we manage it. But that parking lot is in bad shape, and so that's a common asset. So recommendation for, whoops, sorry. So the proposal for your consideration is that at the next school committee meeting, whether it's next week or the following week, that you review the status of the gap that exists then, in case there are some new changes. And here, any changes that we have, either changes of heart in terms of what we've recommended or real changes in terms of dollars, that you then, as a group, need to come to consensus on how you want to move forward with the budget that goes into town meeting. Do you want to be in the same place as the other two groups or not? And then take whatever action or actions would be necessary to meet that budget goal. So no action recommended tonight, but certainly be happy to answer questions or hear your comments.
So the cut, the proposed cut of the business support office of seven thousand, as we get to that final point, obviously, if there's additional gap money that's found, I personally would like to see that put back in. I think it's a small amount of money, and we need the help in the office, so.
Yeah, that's a change. We have twenty-five hour person. It was going to go from twenty-five to thirty-five. This would bring it to thirty as opposed to twenty-five.
So just, you know, as we're shaking out the final numbers. And I agree with you, Dot, on the, I'd like to see those high school teachers stay in there as long as possible for some element of that.
What we did last year, and I think that I would recommend the same thing this year, once you decide what you're going to vote as the budget, is that last year what we did was to say, you know, you at that time voted the same number that advisory and Selectman had, and we committed to come in at that figure. But that we would report to you at your meeting in May, that's subsequent to the week in May when we do all of our assignment of staffing and know how many sections and so on. And it may be that we're comfortable at that point that we can get away without having the whole two point six five, but it would get us to that point. So my recommendation for the next time we meet is that whatever it is you vote for the budget is a commitment to live within that with the details of how we would use those dollars being finalized at the meeting in May, as we did.
But thank you for all this work and the numbers and kind of getting us to a better place.
Any other questions or comments on that?
So I'm all for being creative. But in the creative area where we talk about the specialized tuitions that you've said at this point don't look likely.
Oh, there's not a name attached to them, is what I'm saying.
So I don't know how that really helps us if we go on the premise that I think Advisory did and Selectman did, that they're going to fully fund our special ed budget. And that, so if they're going to fully fund our special ed budget, and it turns out that our special ed budget is a hundred and twelve thousand dollars less, I don't know unless they vote to do so, that they'd want to, you know, that we, it would be in the spirit of, we've worked on this in this kind of whole harmless snow and ice kind of concept, that that hundred and twelve thousand should be used then for regular ed unless they said, hey, the pot of money is still there, and we're willing to recognize that that hundred and twelve thousand, which we don't now need, we do not now need for special ed, could be used for regular ed.
Yeah, I think that's a good comment. I think there's a parallel to that, that, you know, I'm not going to go into fully tonight, but that requires some conversations with John and me and a couple of members of the Subcommittee about how that number was generated. So that's why I say we need to think about it and mull it over. I understand the point that you're making. But at the same time, we need to look at the assumptions that were made about the budget that actually was voted.
On the other hand, this piece, potential piece that you said, you know, if the governor goes forward with this zero percent, which is not included, do we have a, have you calculated a number that that would be if that in fact occurred?
I haven't, but it would be easy to do. We'll simply go to the tuition budget, and we'll take the tuitions that are still in it. We'll subtract out the ones for the South Shore Collaborative because they are already at two percent, and we'll stay there. And we'll calculate, what, three percent of that was.
Well, you went from three percent to two point five, which is a point five percent, and that was equal to twenty-one thousand one eighty-one. So to go from two point five to zero is multiply that by five.
Well, except not quite, because the collaborative tuitions are a lot smaller than some of the others, so.
Say what it was if you.
We can calculate it.
I was looking at that hundred and twenty thousand myself.
So how much would the, be approximately?
Well, that's what I'm saying. We can calculate. I haven't. So let me do that and send you an email and tell you what it is.
The only other comment I had in terms of.
You know, but given, for example, one of those tuitions is two hundred sixty-eight thousand dollars, you know, well, three percent on a figure like that is a big number, and it's out, and that's only one, so.
The other comment on the options that we're talking about here is, I think that where we have consistently used the circuit breaker in arrears. You know, again, I think if we gained agreement that that was something worthwhile doing, in essence, it's almost like a reserve fund transfer, you know, it's moving money from one place to another. So, you know, it's, again, I applaud the idea of looking at all the options, but that's not one that I find attractive at this time, although, you know, again, if.
Yeah, I agree. It's not, I think, an attractive way to fund a budget. On the other hand, we feel that the budget that we have this year is so tight that if there was some unforeseen thing that were to come along, you know, I think that you all want to have some confidence as a place we might go to get that, and that's always there. We've never had to use it, but certainly agree that that's not a way to fund a budget more, giving you some level of confidence as a place we can go if something other than a child moving into town with special needs might be.
It could be a way to balance the budget, Dennis, and then in the event that, you know, the budget, as we get into the budget year and grants turn out differently or other expenses turn out differently, or you have, you know, certain amounts, like we always have a few line items and dollars start dropping at the end of the year, you just pull back the journal entry and you maintain that.
It's more of a cash flow thing, more of a cash flow than.
Yes.
Because I can't impress upon you how tight this budget is. Probably the tightest one I've seen in the fourteen years that I've been doing this budget, so.
Andy. So Dr. Gal, I would, since you talked about what's known, we don't know what's going to happen with the governor, but if the governor says that he's recommending flat tuitions, which is known now, I'd be more inclined to go from that three percent to zero. I'd also be inclined to take out the two tuitions that do not have names attached. Because the thinking is, to me, we do have the reserve fund. Hopefully, it's going to go through.
Right, yep.
In terms of using the circuit breaker, I don't like doing that. You know, we've been disciplined about always doing it one way.
Yeah, you're right.
I want to change our discipline and especially the fact that we have the reserve fund, so I don't want to use the circuit breaker for that. And then the other thing that keeps coming to my mind, I don't know what the net expense for a new supervisor for buildings or whatever. I remember last, the salary was in at eighty thousand.
No, it was, it's in at ninety with a twenty-five thousand offset from the Selectman's budget.
So I would rather see that position go than the high school teachers. So that's sixty-five thousand, and I'm almost, I'd almost would rather also have the restoration of a maintenance person than the supervisor net to us at sixty-five. So that's what I'm thinking about. Or at least, when I look at the first thing here, I'd rather that sixty-five thousand be offset versus the elimination of the two point six five FTEs at the high school. And that's what's off the top of my head when I'm looking at this here.
Okay.
I have a question probably for Ray. Under what legal authority does the governor have to tell a private institution that they can't raise tuition?
It has been done one other time in recent years, and so that's a good question. I'd like to find out, you know, the answer because it was done once before in my fairly immediate memory, so.
I don't know the answer to that. I mean, I imagine that because there is some regulation involved, that he does have some ability, but I don't know.
It may be, it may be because the increases have to be approved by OSD.
Right.
And he may have a direct influence over OSD.
I just think that's, I would hate to see us go all the way down to zero, I think.
Right.
Right.
Well, I think the good thing is that, you know, if we left it at, if we left it at two and a half, even if we, you know, closed the gap of one fifty or didn't, decided to vote the AdCom number, and then we got information from the legislature, because really, the governor proposes something, but it's really the legislature. So now the budget is with the House. In May, it goes to the Senate. Senate gets the last read. And they probably won't vote until late June, and then fiscal year starts July one. I mean, that's typically how it works. So we may not know until June, you know. But if it looks like they're going to follow that inclination of the governor, then that's kind of found money. And then the things that we anticipated cutting, we don't have to cut because the money will be available, right? So, you know, just kind of along those lines, you know, typically, we do have legislators come in around this time of year. Everything got kind of pushed back a little bit because of the delay in the governor's budget being released. But I had contacted Garrett Bradley, Bob Helen's office, and Jamie Murphy's office as well about coming in. And I thought it was important that we get them in before town meeting, if at all possible. Garrett and Jamie are available on the sixth, not on the thirteenth. Bob is traveling on the sixth, but he can send an aide, and he has done that in the past. So that coupled with the discussion we're going to have in a minute with respect to the planning board meeting, which has been scheduled for the thirteenth, leads us to maybe want to reconsider our rescheduling of the meeting, which was at the sixth. We moved to the thirteenth because it made more sense, but maybe moving it back to the sixth, then we can have the legislators come next week. And that would be potentially the last meeting before our town meeting. Meaning, so if we wanted to revoke the budget, it would be at next week's meeting. I presume that we wouldn't want to do that in a shortened half-hour meeting prior to town meeting. It wouldn't make sense. So can everybody make a meeting on the sixth?
I can.
Instead of the thirteenth?
I think I'm still fine for that.
I think the meeting of the thirteenth at the planning board is going to be a lengthier one than, you know, just appearing, so that's another.
And we're scheduled for seven P.M., and I would imagine it would take some time. I'm in.
I can do the sixth.
Carol? So you've gotten a majority, I'm checking.
Yeah, that's fine.
Schedule it.
So I'll let the legislators know to plan on the sixth then. So we'll have Bob and Jamie, sorry, Garrett and Jamie, and Bob's office will send Ted his aide.
Good.
Ten and thirty on the sixth.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's just a week from now.
Back to that tuition question, so it really isn't part of the budget, although as the budget gets negotiated and various people weigh in, it may be one of those, you know, bargaining chips that may change during that negotiation. That's the only thing I'm thinking about. So I'm going to send you all the, what the two and a half percent on the non-collaborative tuitions will be, and also try to find the answer to why, why can the governor make that? I suspect he has the authority to direct the OSD as to some decision-making.
Maybe our legislators can tell us next week.
Yes, good point, good point.
So in line with, you know, your final slide about perhaps ways to approach it or options, it occurs to me that, in knowing that there was a discussion at the Selectman's meeting about perhaps if additional money was found and how that money might be allocated, I'm wondering if it's really in our interests to vote a different number before town meeting. We may want to discuss whether we want to actively promote a different number at town meeting on the floor. I'm not suggesting that, but, you know, but if we don't do that, chances are probably ninety-nine point three eight four percent that the Advisory Committee and Selectman's recommended number would be accepted. Then if there were changes after that, and more, you know, chapter seventy money came in or other things came in, perhaps we could go back to Advisory and Board of Selectmen and say, hey, we now know in June, whatever, that X number of dollars have come through, you know, we, and get, because we revoke a number that is the same, then we were in essence saying that we agree that that's what the budget should be. Of course, we could revoke again, but.
Well, we did the same thing last year. I understand exactly what you're saying, but we did that last year. We had that gap of a hundred and fifty-one thousand, I think it was. And then fortunately, you know, Dot was able to come back in May, and we were able to kind of close that gap and not have to cut those things that were really not funded.
But we still did vote before town.
We did vote. We revoked it, and we did it sooner than now. I would be concerned about, you know, going into town meeting with, you know, not in agreement. There's discussion going, like, you know, we talked to them. I'm sure you talked to them, Dot talks to them, members of Advisory, Selectman, Ted. So there's no secret, if there's, you know, additional money is found, we'll know about it. And, you know, as Dot said, you know, there are some discussions, you know, ongoing with some members of AdCom about, you know, kind of some of the assumptions that they used in coming to the recommendation that was ultimately voted.
You raised, I think you raised a fair point, you know, so I think it's something to consider.
Well, we have another week to think about it, see if there are any changes, any new information. You know, our legislators may come in here next week and be able to give us really good insight as to what,
direction.
What they're thinking and what they think will likely be the case, you know. They may be able to tell us definitively, yeah, there's no way the legislature won't support the governor's, you know, recommendation to keep the tuitions flat. And if that's the case, then we know there's two and a half, two and a half percent found right there, um.
We might ask, uh, for them to research that during this week, that is a specific question that we have.
Yep.
Good idea.
Yep. I'll have to confirm with them in the morning, so I'll do that, yeah.
I would say, I, I agree with most of these, what people have said, I don't, I wouldn't wanna do the circuit breaker allocation. I'm in favor of the maintenance manager position, um, so, I like that to stay in. Um, and as we get closer, I'd also like us to consider, you know, if we're down to seventy-five thousand, can we take from, a little more from the revolving accounts to close that gap? Um, we're in pretty good shape with those, and if we're really down to a minute number, I'm hesitant on eliminating the high school teachers, but I also think that last year, the process worked really well of. In, later in May, when we really knew what was going on, of sharing with everyone the information of how things had still changed and that we were transparent about communicating that, and it made people feel comfortable with what happened. And so, um, you know, I would hope, cross my fingers that the students have selected their courses appropriately and we'd be okay, but definitely the high school teacher is something on my radar on the long term that we have to address, so. All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, six-four, so, the, um, this is at the, uh, the hearing, uh, with the planning board has been scheduled for April thirteenth at seven PM. Um, that is, um, acting on our application for modification of the site plan approval conditions, um, specifically, um, a few of the conditions relative to the use of, um, lights and sound on the, uh, synthetic turf surface, um, as we discussed on March second. Many of those were, um, requested by Margaret Conady, our athletic director, um, based on, um, the past year of experience using, um, the facilities, um, consulting with her coaches and their feedback. Um, a couple of, uh, um, requests or minor requests from, um, some youth users, um, but most of the changes are, um, centered around the high school use in particular, um. And at prior meetings, I had given you, um, a copy of all of the, um, planning board decisions and the amendments, um, as well as the, um. You've received a copy of the, the application with the narrative, um, and what was requested, um, was essentially taking, um, the exhibit or the, uh, conditions that were attached to the, um, site plan approval condition and marking them up to reflect what we're requesting based on the narrative. Um, and that, they, they want submitted by, um, April eighth, um, so I thought it would be, uh, a good opportunity to just circulate that to you, um. And if there were any questions or comments about it, that we could discuss it now, now that we're gonna meet again on the sixth, we'll have a second opportunity if we felt we needed to, to, to discuss it before the eighth deadline. Um, so there's plenty of opportunity if, if something were to come up, but these are, um, these are essentially a, a markup that reflects the narrative, um, that was, um, submitted in the application for modifications. And generally, um, Margaret's, uh, comments, as we had discussed before, um, centered around, um, kind of flexibility, in particular, um, the ability to. Schedule three practices back to back during the week, three to five, five to seven, and seven to nine, using the lights, so an extension of a half an hour, um, of light time, um, during the week, um. The, um, addressing the Title IX issue, um, so, you know, as you know, the ad hoc committee who began to work on, um, a usage policy that we then finalized and voted on on January eighth, two years ago, um, was altered by the planning board. Um, and specifically, there were kind of limitations put on it, um, that ended up being Title IX violations inadvertently, um, I think on their part, but, um, it was something that we couldn't address at the time. Um, and, um, it's something that, that, that should be addressed, um, so this is the opportunity to do that.
When you say Title IX violations, did we get a report from anyone?
No, so, so we did, you remember that in twenty-ten.
We had that meeting.
We had the, well, hold on a second. So, you remember in twenty-ten, we began a review by the Office of Civil Rights, Department of Education, um, and it was a, a thorough review of, you know, our whole, uh, district and what we provide. And the report that took, I think, two years to come indicated that there were a number of things that we needed to address, um, and the, the things in particular with respect to facilities were, um, we were going to be able to address with this project, right? Um, the, the violations specifically came from the planning board limiting our use, uh, of lights and sound on Friday nights until ten PM for only football games, when that was not in the policy that we adopted. We did not limit it to football games, football games is generally a male gender sport, it didn't allow for field hockey games or soccer games for either gender. Um, and as a result, we are not, um, providing a, um, um, an equivalent, uh, experience to the female gender, um, and as a result, we're in violation of Title IX.
So, in my recollection of the meeting with the person from the Office of Civil, over in room one oh three at the high school.
Yeah.
That person said, we look at things holistically.
Yeah.
And it's not a tit for tat.
Right.
So although the males, in our case, might play Friday night, that does not mean it's a violation if the females don't.
Right.
And so, when you're saying that's a violation from listening in that meeting, and granted, it was a couple of years ago, I thought that person was very clear. It's a holistic point, we look at everything, so, if only right now, the men are playing Friday night, I did not take that for a Title IX violation.
Do you feel that's an equitable situation?
He's using the word Title IX.
Okay, I'm just asking.
No, he just, he asked me the word Title IX, and so when, if someone's saying, would you use the word Title IX as a fear that we have to do something? It's, I, I, I wanna make clear that that was not what I understood.
So, I was at that meeting too, and I know Phil, who now works for a private law firm, okay, who came to us from the Office of Civil Rights, um, and what he said was, an equivalent experience, you're right, not a, they look at it holistically, so it doesn't have to be the same exact experience. But, we're only allowed to go to ten PM on Friday nights for high school football, we're not allowed to go to ten PM on a Tuesday night, for instance, for soccer, or ten PM on a Wednesday night for field hockey. So, there is no equivalent experience offered to the female gender. In this policy, which was adopted as a condition by the planning board, restricts us to boys essentially, because there are no women playing high school football currently. There is, um, there may be somebody on the freshman or JV, I know that there are girls that have gone through the youth program, in fact, there are girls currently in the youth program, um, so that may change, but for the most part, it restricts it to gender which is essentially male. Um, so, I'm not suggesting that it needs to be equal, I'm merely suggesting it needs to provide an equivalent experience, which it doesn't currently as it's raised.
Well, clearly, it should do what we, I think our original policy was, it says, Hingham High School games.
Correct.
Right.
Right, which is what we adopted, and it was more restrictively, right, that's, that's all I'm suggesting, yeah.
Friday night.
Exactly.
And limit the amount of Friday nights.
That's, that's all I'm suggesting, yeah.
Either gender's team should be able to play, which was, I think it was unintentional, and I think when it first came up with the, when the field hockey team were playing in the playoffs on a Friday night, everybody that we spoke to was like, oh geez, didn't, no, no, we didn't intend that to be the case, that restriction to be there. So, we're just trying to clarify.
No, for sure, and I remember them asking Margaret, you know, and she said, no, you know, typically, the only games that happen on Friday nights are the football games. Well, I think that ended up not being the case throughout the past year, as we saw, um, but in addition, the way this was restricted, it didn't allow us those opportunities for the female sports to, to have those equivalent experiences.
So, again, I don't think there's any question that, that that piece should be changed.
Yeah.
The, the other part, and, and the, from eight-thirty to nine o'clock, uh, during the week, uh, I think Margaret makes a persuasive case to me, I'm not, I'm not a butter or a neighbor, but that, you know, it makes sense to have, be able to put all three practices in there. On the other hand, the other part is that the, you know, the way it's written, the proposal's written now, it goes from three Friday nights to no restriction.
Well, so.
So, I'm, I'm, I don't know whether we know, we should be going from that to unlimited or something else in that.
And. Yeah. Right, so, and, and, and that, we're gonna cover in the hearing, and Margaret's gonna speak to that. So, what I didn't wanna do was put a number in that I didn't know made sense or was appropriate, right? I'm not necessarily suggesting that it be unrestricted or open-ended. Margaret should be able to speak to that in detail about what makes the most sense.
Okay.
Based on the schedule of games that we have with field hockey, with soccer, with football, you know, how many night games essentially, um, that could go late, you know, could, could we reasonably expect to have? If it's, you know, Friday night's the only night that we could go till ten, you know, are there opportunities for, um, soccer and field hockey to play on Friday nights? When in the past, I think she said, maybe not, but maybe there are opportunities now, maybe schedules change, I don't know the answer to that. So, that's something that I expect that she'll speak to specifically at the planning board hearing.
I'd like that to be clarified for me before that goes to the planning board, because that.
I've had a conversation with her, and she is not looking to substantially change that number.
Right.
Well, then, you know, when I looked at this, um, when I had read the narratives and had the discussion about the Title IX, to me, it meant, okay, so we're gonna have an even number of Friday nights allocated here, whether it's four, and, to me, this says unlimited, and I'm uncomfortable.
Well, I just didn't know what the number should be, so I didn't wanna put it in.
Well, then, I mean, I think, I, I think we should put something in there, um, that we can agree on before it goes to the planning board, as, right now, the way it's worded, to me, it's unlimited, and, um, I, I don't think that's.
I don't think that's the intention.
No, I don't think that's the intention at all, all right, so I, I don't disagree with you, and we can, we can talk with, we can talk with Margaret some more, and for next week, we can, we can confirm that.
Hey, that's good. Find the number for Monday.
You know, I will remind you, though, that high school use can't be restricted at all. We allowed it to be restricted because we didn't wanna fight about Dover at the time, and we wanted it permitted, and we wanted it built, but the law won't allow high school use to be restricted at all. And if we ended up having to have that discussion, that it, it would be decided that high school use couldn't be restricted. The youths, youth could be restricted for sure, but not the high school use.
I think we're gonna arrive at a mutually agreeable.
I agree.
Yeah, I don't, I don't wanna get into the law because that's not my forte, but I'm looking at this from, we're having a year review now, we have another year review and another year, and it's been a lot of history of this site with, including the neighbors, and I would rather we take it in steps and we evaluate as we add more and more. Um, as opposed to, you know, jumping in and throwing everything in at the first time, so that's where I'm coming from on this, I'd really like to see some.
Makes sense.
Hey, that's okay, I've got a scoop, is it possible to have, to invite Margaret for next Monday night's meeting?
Sure.
I know you said.
Let's see if she's available, yeah.
If she's available, if she's available.
Yeah.
I think that would be very helpful, helpful to me.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, cause I think, so, first of all, I've always been very vocal that I love the facilities, I wish we could use them twenty-four seven, but I also realize that part of it's living in the town of Hingham, you have to work with people. Um, I'm a little perplexed on the entire process here, because a lot of this start, stuff started in ad hoc, then long range planning, and then when we were reviewing fees, it was the policy. I mean, Margaret hasn't come spoken to me, I don't really know what the youth groups are, I don't know what the neighbors are really thinking, so, I'm not, you know, to me, whether this happens in April or in May or June, it's really for, we're hoping to get things going by September. So, I'm really, I'm just a little bit trying to get, now, granted, March second, I wasn't here, but that was not a regularly scheduled meeting, it was moved because of the weather, so I, I missed some of that discussion, but I'm a little bit perplexed why this hasn't come up through a subcommittee or reactivated the ad hoc committee or stuff like that, so then we could really had some formal stuff instead of, you know, some notes from Margaret. Yeah, I think Margaret should be presenting to this, I think we should have, you know, I, I just think we should have more dialogue before we go ahead to the planning board and say we want this. I mean, it's just, that's what perplexes me, I love the athletic field, I think we are so lucky we have one, especially with all the snow, I don't even think we'd be practicing if we didn't have one, none of our teams would be playing. But I'm a little concerned that this is just moving quickly without a lot of due diligence, and you mentioned something about the Dover there, I know we don't wanna go down that path, here's what concerns me. We have in our budget right now, money to do a feasibility study for the weight. There's a good chance that we're gonna renovate that, it could even be a two-story renovation, I don't know what's gonna come out of that. We need the neighbors on our side. Secondly, we talked about the high school, when I was the chair of the master plan review committee, the high school held fourteen hundred people, year two thousand twenty-one, we have fourteen seventy-six there. I don't know if we're gonna need modules, I don't know what we're gonna need, again, we need the neighbors on our side. So, I really liked, we took us twenty years to get this facility, we've had a great eighteen months, I'd like to get more use and everything, but I wanna take baby steps, and I'd like to have more input than, you know, we talked about March second, we didn't talk about it really March sixteenth, Dennis asked a question, we came back here, we put on the agenda, and now we're ready with this marked up thing. So, I rambled too long, I apologize, you got my, my points across, we're not doing anything.
So, you got the other materials that we distributed previously though, right?
Uh, the first I heard of, I mean, March second was the first one that we knew about, where we're going for March eleventh.
Right.
But, so that's, that's that, but we never, as a group, had, a lot of times, I think, a policy or a long range planning would host, host meetings, we didn't have any of those.
Right, so, so there was a process, uh, we, we couldn't have the one-year lookback, it was longer than a one-year, because we weren't finished with the work that needed to be done up there so that we could get the sign-offs from.
We don't even have the CO, correct?
Not the, we have a, we have a partial.
Partial, but not a full CO.
Well, so we don't, so, we, we have a temporary CO, um, for the project, we have a partial certificate of compliance from the Conservation Commission, the final will be issued in the spring, once they can confirm that the drainage is all working as intended and designed, and the grass grows in as it's supposed to.
Which could be in June by the time it's settled.
Right, exactly, so whenever that is, right? Um, but, the, the, they wanted us to come back in, and in fact, Mary Savage Dunham was, you know, kind of pushing it along, and, you know, we were pushing RAD to come back in the fall and finish their work and finish their work, and they delayed it, and it was the first week in November when it actually got finished. The as-built plans weren't revised and finalized until the first week in December, and then filed with the building commissioner and conservation and the planning board, so that we could schedule that one-year lookback, which is what, um, Mary Savage Dunham was, was kind of pushing us to, to do. Um, once we were able to do that, we scheduled the, the, the meeting and had that, um, and as part of that process, um, you know, I talked to, to Margaret a great deal, uh, in preparation for that, to get her feedback about how she thought, you know, the year went, feedback from her coaches, and all throughout the year, she had, um, you know, given me kind of anecdotal, uh, evidence about, you know, things that, you know, she thought would be good to, to seek to change. You know, we knew about the Title IX issues immediately, and that was something that we kind of just held on to, knowing that there would be an opportunity in the future to go back and, and raise those, um.
I think we should have Margaret come in next Monday, and I think she'll be able to answer your questions, it's just, we're just tweaking, we're tweaking a current poll, we're just tweaking a current.
Absolutely.
Well, I think, I think we also need to. But I think also, we should have Police, uh, Police Chief Perrino or someone from the leadership group of the Police Department, if we're trying to have them cut their details, I mean, I'd like to hear their point of view, this isn't one of the recommendations in here to.
Right, so, so let me just, I, I think.
He missed it, he didn't. So there was a whole meeting, I mean, this shouldn't surprise anybody, right? We knew when we built the fields, we had a look back. So this isn't surprising anybody.
No. And, and the process with the planning board that we're going to have on the thirteenth is going to explore all these things. No one's asking you to vote this as a change in the school committee policy right now, because the fact is that we voted a policy two years ago that got changed by the planning board. So what's actually being enforced right now is not the policy that we voted for the property that we oversee. So what we're seeking to do is just have the conversation with them about some potential modifications that we've gotten requests for based on users of the field, most of them being the high school sports teams, right? And the athletic director, who answers to DOT, and, you know, gives us good information, and we all can talk to at any time, you know how to reach her, and she'll tell you exactly what she's told me, and what she sent in an email, which we provided to you, and we discussed on the second. So it's not a surprise.
No, I'm always aware of the one-year lookback. As I said before, I'm used to having more, it used, it seemed to me like the procedure was, it would always come through like a subcommittee, and it didn't really seem to come through a subcommittee, in my opinion, from beyond the committee for five years.
Right. So, so there's, there's one other area that seemed to be a significant change to me, and just to put it on the table. So, so on the PA part, where it was until seven thirty, this proposes till nine o'clock, and it was twice a week, Monday through Friday, and that was taken out. Is that, is that, I'd like Margaret to be able to address, you know, the, how often we do need, have the need. And the seven thirty, my recollection was, the idea that for those types of events, there would be the now, you know, the opening remarks, and the, you know, National Anthem, or whatever, if, if something at halftime was choreographed, that would happen, and that's when the PA would stop, and that's, and there was a lot of concern by the neighbors at that time. So I'm not saying it's a bad idea, I've just.
And Margaret can speak to that next week, but here's what Margaret said in response to that specifically. So they need to be able to announce goals, okay? Everybody announces goals, okay? Football has play-by-play, that's the only sport that has play-by-play. The other sports, whether it's field hockey, or soccer, or lacrosse in the spring, they need to be able to announce goals, all right? Margaret's, Margaret's comment here was, we only announce goals, games need to have a PA for the entire game, there's no play-by-play. During the week, we only announce goals, we have a governor on the PA system, so it won't be a problem for the neighbors, several neighbors have told me that it isn't a problem. This is Margaret's words. So I don't know when all the games will be scheduled, maybe Margaret, in the conversation with us next week, or before the planning board, and that was my intention, would clarify about the need to extend the use of PA on a limited basis, to be able to announce goals. So it, so it would be available throughout the whole game, but there would be really no additional use of it, other than announcing goals, which happen whenever goals are scored. So that's, that's what it is.
Yeah, 'cause I know that was a significant concern at the time, that, you know, that it not go beyond that timeframe, and it'd only be a couple of additional times a week, and so it would be useful, when she comes to us, to know what the schedule would look like, how much, you know, and if there are lots of games that would require that, in some sense. I know in soccer, it's probably not an issue, there's only two or three goals a game, but in some of the other sports, it is somewhat more significant.
The, I mean, I think the other, the other changes are kind of self-explanatory. You know, you mentioned the police, that specifically came from Margaret, and she is putting together, at the request of the planning board, a list of large events for which we had police details. And anecdotally, she, you know, talks to other athletic directors from all the other towns on a regular basis. She has specific experience with events in other towns where they had police details, and she says, at no time does any other town have more than two or three police officers. So just the requirement to have six to eight, she found excessive for a number of reasons, and that's why she requested that we change it.
And I also think that was discussed before we had the far parking law put in, or Union Street problems were dealt with, the curbing, so I think it's just a good time.
It was an excessive amount of caution.
Yes. And that was, you know, fine at the time.
Chief Perrino came in and met with the policy group at this time, when we went through the very first. Yeah, so I mean, he had a.
They were at the planning, when we were at the planning board.
Both of them, like, two years ago.
The police and building commissioner were both there, and said they had no issues.
Yeah, at the lookback meeting, Deputy Chief Olson and Mike Clancy were both there. And, you know, other than the initial problem with the sound, which happened, you know, a year and a half ago, which was corrected, you know, right after that, and was tested, there hasn't been a problem, and they haven't received complaints. The. You're right about, about Mike Perrino definitely being involved in having those meetings. You know, I will say that, at the time, they thought, they really weren't sure what was gonna happen with the introduction to lights, and the ability to have these evening games and other activities. And I think, now that we've had, you know, over a year of use by the different sports teams and organizations, and the different seasons, that kind of gives us a look at how things have gone, and what makes sense, and what's appropriate. Whereas before, they didn't have any of that information available, because we hadn't put it into use yet. So. The only, the only real change from the youth sports that was requested was, was two things, to add play-by-play for football games, because it wasn't included in the conditions, and it was requested because every other team in the, in the away towns has play-by-play. And the other was to be able to start, rather than at twelve in September, to start at eleven-thirty, to be consistent with the other teams, because it tends to be a scheduling problem with the other teams. And those were the two requests that were, that were put in there for the, for the youth.
I had a couple other comments. So I would like to see, as we said with Margaret, more specificity about the usage, and the number of times that the lights would be used, and the sound. Because I even, you know, I went on the website, as I was looking at this, and it, number seven under conditions, that we're supposed to post, and there's nothing posted for the spring season, and I looked at the MIAA schedule, and it doesn't seem like there's any game later than, you know, there was a couple at five-thirty or six, but there aren't even any games at night in the spring. So having a policy that doesn't reflect actual usage, I think, I wouldn't want it to be in the policy, if we're not practically gonna do that.
Sure. And the reason why it's not posted on the website, too, and this actually came up at the lookback, it was posted for the fall, it's not, all the schedules haven't been set yet, and because sports got delayed, everything but track got granted a delay, so not everything is scheduled yet, and that's why Margaret hasn't put it up yet. That's what she told me.
All right. Well, they're on the MIAA schedule, so, for the May game, so I would assume those are gonna happen, but whatever, she can explain it.
She was, she was at the MIAA meeting last week, so that may have just happened in the last few days.
Oh, okay. Well.
I'm just giving you the facts.
No, I, I'll ask her about it. That's, so I think we need to be consistent on that. I also would like to hear from the neighbors about the impact of the noise and the additional lights. That would be very important for me. I think with the Hingham youth football, adding the play-by-play is gonna add a lot of sound, if it's every single game on their Sundays, that it's play-by-play. And so I'd like to get some more impact from them, and, you know, maybe we can do a couple of games next season, and then add more in the future. But I am being ultra-sensitive about, you know, the sound, and that, when I reread the planning board, all of their notes from the meetings, the nighttime use of amplified sound, and the, and the lights were the two biggest things. And the lights, we know, are a little bit better, but still some concerns. But I'd like to hear from people about the sound. Then, in the footnote on the first page, it says additionally, lights and sound may be used for HHS tournament or playoff games. I think we should add MIAA specifically in there. I wouldn't want us, if we hosted a tournament, is that an exception, or is, are we just talking about the official playoff games?
I think that's a good point, because we aren't in all of the MIAA games.
So, and then on the, the flexibility is available for starting and ending times due to delays caused by inclement weather or other uncontrollable circumstances. I think we should add a such as for the uncontrollable circumstances, just so people are clear, and we don't, it doesn't come up at a later time, if we can give some examples of what that might be.
Your opposing team bus got lost.
Yeah.
Liza, I'm sorry, can you go back to the MIAA? Are you saying to restrict it to MIAA tournament?
Include.
Or to include?
No, include. That it.
Because, I mean, like, the track team plays, I'm not sure they, they're under MIAA, they have a mass track association, so it's like a different organizing group. So you're not saying that only MIAA tournaments can be played? I'm not sure.
Well, I'm thinking of it, if like, a booster club hosts a tournament, that, you know, are we gonna make exceptions on lights and sound for?
Because it's not a Hingham team playing in the game.
Well, it's not like a playoff tournament. I guess if.
A Hingham High School tournament, it's a team, Hingham High School team has to be part of the playoff.
But they're part of the MIAA, so that's why she's just saying, put in the MIAA.
But the MIAA uses neutral sites for a lot of the games, and parts, so I think that's what.
Yeah. Well, yeah, if we hosted, or, well, I mean, it's like, the girls, you know, soccer team went, you know, those are the exception, yes, that's included, but.
Well, there was some discussion about that, as I recall, about whether we should volunteer to be a site.
Yeah.
Where we would be hosting games where our teams were not necessarily playing. I don't have a strong opinion about that one way or the other, but I think it's something that ought to be clarified, because my recollection was that had to be done a year or so, and it, you know, sometimes they pick those sites well in advance, and obviously you wouldn't know whether Hingham's playing or not.
Well, yeah, our teams played at a neutral site, so, which, I guess, is there room for, there is room for exception, so. I would like to see us host, since we've been hosted by so many other schools, fortunately, for our successes.
Well, as the conditions read now, we wouldn't be able to do that if the Hingham team wasn't playing. So that we would need to seek to expand that use. Because if you look at, at.
Where would that fall?
Conditions, be conditions of allowed use, field lights on the, on the Hingham High School athletic field complex may be used only by entities recognized as Hingham organizations. So, does used by Hingham organization mean Hingham, the Hingham High School is the host, and it's not a Hingham team playing? I don't think that that's, I don't think that was the intention of that. So I, I agree with you, it's a fair point that maybe should be raised.
Well, let's have Margaret address that, of we've never had an opportunity to host, and, not that we would do it on a regular basis, but I think we should have our fair share. Sorry to the neighbors.
And again, just, not to get too, too deep into the weeds, but rather, perhaps maybe, rather than saying MIAA, we say high school sanctioning bodies, or something like that, you know, if we cover all the.
Yeah.
No, I, I, and let me just say, I agree with you completely. I'm not looking to, you know, want to get feedback on this, absolutely. The, these are the suggestions that came from Margaret, the coaches, and a couple of minor things from youth football, so. You know, if you, if you feel that you want to tell Margaret that her requests are unreasonable or not appropriate, I mean, I suppose we could do that.
Well, I don't think it's that so much, is, you know, we felt our original request two years ago were reasonable.
Right.
There was a lot of feeling from the neighbors, and other people in town, that, you know, hey, we didn't want to do the full extent, not twenty-four seven, but we didn't want to do the full extent, we didn't want to have games every Friday night, we didn't want to, you know, even, you know, so I think, hopefully, people feel a lot more comfortable with the situation. I think it is important, and certainly the planning board will give people the opportunity to voice their concerns. But, and to Andy's point, we had a lengthy, months-long process where people had lots of opportunity, and then this came up, you know, again, I'm not suggesting nobody knew, but it kind of came up the end of February, beginning of March, now the planning board's having a meeting April thirteenth, wouldn't want anybody to come back and say, next fall, wait a second, how come there's two football games, and three soccer games, or whatever, when, oh, that happened last, well, how come I didn't know about it? So, you know, I, I'm not implying or anything, but I think it's important that, you know, we, to your, I think to Andy's point, that we, you know, we really baby, took baby steps to doing this, smaller steps than I think most of us would have liked. It looks like, everything looks fine, you know, we probably, if we want, if we're at the, we're at the ten-yard line, we probably don't want to, you know, go all the way to the, to the goal line this time, maybe we want to get to the fifty or the, or whatever, you know, this time, so.
Well, I'd just like, to add what Andy and Dennis have said, is, you know, to me, too, I'm on the school committee, and I, this, to me, feels like we're changing our own policy. And I would want to make sure that we follow our procedures of.
Policy, that was the planning board's decision. Our policy never limited it, for instance, for football. We didn't limit it for football, we just said for Friday night use.
But we're.
And if you remember some of those meetings, too, you know, Margaret was there, and, you know, there was a lot of kind of tailoring, cutting, backing into a corner, and saying, what are you really, you know, and when kind of push came to shove, and you had to give an answer, or else you were gonna get denied, Margaret gave, okay, I guess we could live with X. But frankly, over the last year, year and a half of using it, living with X is not reasonable, in her opinion.
No, I, I understand that, but of the policy, the school committee policy that I printed off our website, we're changing that in this discussion. And so if, I mean, we have lights Monday through Friday until nine, eight-thirty PM, except for three Friday night games until ten. The way this is written, we're changing this. So.
So I'm reading what she has. It looks like, it says proposed multipurpose field update January fourteenth.
That was the date of the vote.
What, I mean, but I think, whatever's on the website, someone should check it.
I think that's it. It was, it was January.
Well, I mean, similar to Liza's concern, I actually emailed Ray and Carol this morning, and said, geez, you know, if we're gonna vote a policy, you know, our, our policy says we need to present in one meeting, vote the subsequent meeting, I think your answer was absolutely right, that what we're saying is, we're proposing to the planning board, here's the kinds of things we would like. Once we hear what they are willing to accept, I think we will need to do exactly what you're suggesting, Liza.
This is just having a discussion.
Have a policy that we put together, it'll be presented in one meeting, and then we'll vote on it next meeting. And they may say, you could do, you can have lights till eleven o'clock every Friday night, and we would say, our school committee, we don't want that to be a policy.
Correct.
You know, they, they, but we can't be more, we could be more restrictive than them, but we can't be less restrictive than them.
Okay. Well, we'll hear from Margaret, and I hope anyone else that would like to give us their opinions. That would be good.
Yeah, there's some folks in the room now, who might have opinions, happy to.
You know I do, I always have an opinion on.
Wallace, would you like to speak?
That would be great. I, actually, it's not.
Wallace, if you could come up here, tell us who you are, name and address, for the camera, please.
One question I have, just as a general question.
Wallace, name and address, please.
Wallace Boyer, thirty-one Downing Street.
Thank you.
To the, to the school committee, I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of pressure for one field. You're trying to get all males, females, lacrosse, soccer, football, all this stuff on one field, and our street and our neighborhood absorbs it all, right? So my opinion is, it's too much to put on one field, and there should be some sort of discussion within the school committee about how to alleviate. of discussion within the school committee about how to alleviate the pressure on one field, so whether that's finding other places to have a multi-purpose field, um, I think the town has to address it, because I don't think we should have to absorb every team, both females, males, fall, spring, and I think it should be dissipated throughout the town, and I, I know that that's a-
That's a great point, I will tell you that a new committee was formed-
Good.
-members were appointed about a month ago, one meeting was held, um, and I think it's gonna meet monthly, um, and it's essentially to address concerns that came up last summer, um, when, um, folks had requested that, um, the building committee consider putting synthetic turf at the middle school, and some of the concerns at that time were, you know, that's not really the appropriate place, we really need a master plan, in fact, Liza, you spoke at length about this, we need to, we need to take a look at the town's facilities in detail, in inventory, usage, condition, maintenance, who's in charge, who should be in charge, and really put together a master plan for athletic facilities, and that's something that Irma Lawter has been working toward for a number of years, um, I think Bruce Rebuffo spoke about it in the past as well, and that committee was just recently formed, had one meeting, um, and that is the goal, to first put together an inventory, um, um, address, you know, information about, you know, fields, facilities, who controls them, who maintains them, costs, all of that stuff, with the goal of working toward, you know, perhaps a proposal sometime down the road about some other type of facility needed in the town, to address exactly what you just said, so I, I agree with you.
Okay.
That's not something the school committee can do, because we only control the school committee-
Right.
-the school property-
Yeah.
So, when folks suggested-
But chances are, they'll be on a school property, right?
Sure, but when folks suggested, you know, for instance, that we not, not spend-
I mean, it'd be great if they weren't.
When folks suggested that we not spend the, um, the, the, um, middle school money available for a field at the middle school, they said, "Well, it really should be at Lynch, over on Beale Street, or it should be at Carlson," and we said, "Well, we can't do that with that money, that's only for this project-"
I remember that.
"-and we don't control those fields," so if that were deemed to be the appropriate place for something, and who knows what that would be, if possible, um, then that would be a town decision, right, down the road, and how to finance that, what it would be, I have no idea.
Right, right.
So I agree with you, I think it's a great point.
I think, I just think, you know, you're trying to fill a lot of voids in the program with one, with one field, and I think it's, without changing our lives drastically, it's very difficult to do. Um, I think the biggest concern for, for us, on our street, which is Downing, is the amplified noise, and the increase in the amplified noise, um, and I can't, I don't really know what the increase is by what you've asked, so, um, you know, certainly, noise until nine o'clock, six days a week, would be a lot, even if it's just scoring, and, but it's constant noise, and you sit in your living room, and you're listening to it constantly, so I think that would be a, a big concern for us, but until we know what exactly Margaret is asking for, then, then, you know, we could speak to it, but I think the amplified noise is the biggest thing for us, out of this list. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Beth?
Beth Rockoff, 36 Pleasant Street, um, I'm having a real problem with the fact that there were lots of meetings, and poor Carol went through hell doing this process, um, and I wonder where the integrity is in standing behind a commitment that you made to the neighborhood. Um, there were a lot of people that felt like it needed to be on the high school facility, but it is in a residential area, and it was not put in an industrial area where the sound and noise wouldn't make a huge difference, but now that it is in a residential neighborhood, with young kids that go to your schools, that need to be in bed at 7:30, so they're capable of being alert for their educational purposes, if you ask them to be up till nine o'clock at night, listening to noise and cheering, they're not gonna have that sleep that is necessary. And secondly, to me, who is not abutting directly on the thing, it's the traffic, and we have had non-stop increase in traffic, due to not just the turf field, but as rentals get more for auditoriums and indoor athletic facilities, or more cars, because our youth are now all having cars to park there, and all went along, for example, with the snow issues, and granted, this was an exceptional one, you couldn't get down Middle Street, I mean Pleasant Street, um, from 2:15 in the afternoon till after 3:00, it was backed up to, down to the church and the funeral home, on both, and all the way to Middle Street on both directions, and I think, if you're gonna do these kind of things within a residential area, you need to treat the residents with respect and integrity for a policy that you put together.
So we'll continue the discussion next week, I'll ask Margaret if she can attend.
It's .5.
Yeah, the next item is, just to recognize-
Can I ask one more thing?
Yes, Beth.
Sorry. Would you ask Margaret to bring forward a list of the usage for the last fall and this spring season, as to who used the field, what hours they used it, when the lights and sound were used, whether it was games or whatnot, so we know, with the policy that exists, were you using every hour, or you, before we started increasing it, so if we had what was supposed to be on the website for the fall and for the spring, as to, was it a youth team that was using the field, was it a high school field, using the field, what hours were the games, and what time did they go off? Did they, you know, did you use it Monday through Friday, every night till 7:30, with the sound, or did you, you know, two nights a week, or was it only one night a week?
I mean, I, I think, I think the requests and the detail that we'll hear from her next week, I think speak from the experience of this past year with the fall and the spring, um, and that's why she's making the requests.
But if you could have a spreadsheet, so that we could see it.
I'll speak to her about it, and see if she is inclined to do that, okay? Okay, so our Quiz Bowl team, um, won recently, and they're going to Washington DC, so they've been before, this is terrific, what was it, just last weekend?
Uh, last weekend was-
Auburn?
Yes, but they are still in that competition, um, at least, uh, the airing of it.
Right. Okay, well, congratulations to them, um, any 48-hour items?
No.
Okay, I don't think we have some.
I just wanna report on the Hingham Education Foundation, they are having their, um, big fundraiser, they're having a hoedown this year in Cohasset on Friday night, April 10th, and you can buy tickets at hangumeducation.org, you can follow the link for the hoedown. This is a really, really important fundraiser, because our grant season is coming up, and we have received requests in excess of $265,000, and we do not have that much money to be distributing, so it would be great for people to support this, either by buying tickets or being a sponsor, once again, that's at hangumeducation.org, and the event is on April 10th, and you can wear your cowboy boots.
Okay, uh, if nothing else, take a motion to adjourn.
Take the motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.